If you can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Stephen Mesa here? Stephanie? Stephanie Mesa, please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the public. My name is Stephanie Mesa. At this time, I would like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now I see Barbara Barnett, our Police Chaplain. If you could please step forward and give us our vocation.
Lord God, we begin this evening by inviting your presence to be here. We're always grateful that, Lord, we can trust that your wisdom will be displayed by those gathered here. We ask a blessing upon our City Council members, that you would give them keen insight in the decisions they have to make. We're thankful, Lord, for the public servants that are represented here as well, and ask a blessing upon them. And this night also, Lord, bless those that are going to be honored tonight for their service to this community. Thank you for our city. In the name of the Lord. Amen.
You may be seated. I believe our first presentation is going to be by Councilmember David Benabides, followed
Evening, community members. I want to thank you for your patience as we're having an extended closed session. Today, here, we're recognizing the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And there are a lot of people out in our community that, in one way or another, struggle with mental health. In my family alone, there are a few family members that deal with various developmental disabilities. A nephew that struggles with autism. And I think one of the key things that is important is for us to work toward removing a stigma around issues of mental health. Oftentimes, we, particularly right now as we struggle with issues of homelessness throughout our community, sometimes we might see issues of mental health at perhaps an extreme and allow for certain stigmas to be perpetuated. But I think it's very important for us to, as a community, recognize that it's, one is that there are challenges and illnesses people struggle with, and that we need to, we can't dismiss, but rather engage and work toward helping people and coming alongside people rather than stigmatizing and isolating people. So today, within the City of Santana, as we're taking the step of recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness, we're asking that, as a community, we do our very best to erase the stigma of mental health conditions. May has been recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month since 1949. Each year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental illness. The fight against the stigma of mental illness continues each year by way of providing support, educating the public, and advocating for policies that support people with mental illness and their families. One in five Americans is affected by mental health conditions. The stigma of mental illness is toxic to those who suffer with mental health conditions because it creates an environment of shame, fear, and silence that prevents many from seeking treatment. This perception of mental illness will not change unless we act to change it. That's precisely what the action here tonight is, is to be able to, as a city, recognize this as an issue and take a step again toward removing stigma and letting people know that, again, as a community, we want to work with them, support them, and encourage people to receive that type of support. And standing here to my right is somebody that you all might recognize. It's not a, it's a very familiar face and a friend to our community, personal friend and a former council member, former colleague here and servant here to the City of Santana, community leader, works with our youth to an extensive levels. And he's also here today in the capacity as Outreach Engagement Senior Specialist with the Orange County Child Abuse Prevention Center. So he will be receiving today's proclamation. But before I present the proclamation, I'd like to ask former Councilman Reyna if you'd like to share a couple words.
Yeah, I'm not used to public speaking, but I'll try. No, just keep it definitely short. And when we start talking about mental health, it really does talk about the stigma that is associated with this. And my belief, because we're human beings, we all come up short. We're all a little bit broken, a little bit differently than each other. Myself, I'm dyslexic. I have a learning disorder, and it all leads back to mental health issues. If you have children, bullying is what a humongous mental health issue. Child abuse, domestic violence, there's so much wrong going on in the community, and a lot of it has to do with the stigma that's associated with mental health. Please help us and share that. It's okay if you have challenges and issues. It's okay to seek out assistance and help. That is called the process of learning and growing, and that is how we start to achieve a better place, a better wellness for individuals. So I encourage everyone to go out there and support Mental Health Awareness, which is every May, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman. So this presentation, on behalf of the City of Santana, is a proclamation recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health contributes to one's overall health, it helps sustain individuals' thought processes, relationships, productivity, and the ability to adapt to change or face adversity. And whereas mental health, mental illness adversely affects those abilities and often is a life-threatening in nature, I'll jump to the last comment here. Therefore, we, as a mayor and City Council of the City of Santana, do hereby recognize the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month and urge all residents to increase awareness and understanding of mental health by taking the steps to protect their overall health. Thank you for what you do out in the community. Roman?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and thank you, Councilman, for bringing that important matter before us. So May's not only about mental health awareness, but it's also Water Awareness Month as well. And this is Drinking Water Week, so May is full of different things that we should be aware of, and I wanted to talk a little bit about water. And water is so precious to all of us, but it's also very important to the City Council. I'm a director at the Orange County Water District, representing the Santa Ana City Council, and Madam Mayor Protem is our representative to the Metropolitan Water District. So as we know, we have a lot of issues that we've been facing these past few years. We had a drought that lasted four years long, and unfortunately, this last year wasn't a very good one. And I see our waters are, Nabil Sabah shaking his head. So, you know, we are very important and interested in making sure that we make folks out in the community aware that, you know, we have to continue conserving water, we have to continue making all of us realize that it's a precious resource, and that we're trying very, very hard to make sure that we all are aware that we live in a desert, right? And it's a very arid place, and we don't have control over our hydrology. And so months like May, where we're able to focus in on this, is very important for us to just deliver that message in a way that we can, you know, share with our youth, share with our families how important it is for us to be very, you know, concerned about water conservancy as well. So May is recognized as Water Awareness Month, and we are interested in increasing the knowledge that we face about water supplies, droughts, water-saving efforts every day. And this, as I said, is the first full week of May, which we're celebrating Drinking Water Week. And as you know, the water in Santa Ana has, for the last couple of years, competed very well as the best tasting drinking water in the Berkeley Springs competition. So we put our water up against anybody, and we've come out on top, I think, two consecutive years now, so that's a good thing. Water is very important to human health, economic vitality, the environmental quality of our state. And as we know, the water fluctuates, the sources fluctuate with the hydrology and the needs that we have in our community. Water professionals and communities they serve join together to recognize the vital role water plays in our daily lives. And I have with me here Dennis Bilado, who's the president of the Orange County Water District. He's my colleague on that board, but he also is a former councilman from the City of Orange, and he's also Chief of Staff to Supervisor Sean Nelson across the street at the Board of Supervisors. Aside from that, Dennis presides over, or I should say President Bilado, because we're in a formal setting, presides over the Water District, and we have a function over there and we have a project over there called Groundwater Replenishment System. So if, those of you who haven't gone out and visited, really should, I invite you out there to see. It's an award-winning, internationally-recognized project. It's the largest water recycling system in the world. We recycle about 100 million gallons of water a day, and we just celebrated our 10th year anniversary, and President Bilado presided over that ceremony. And we were also inducted in the Guinness Book of World Records for recycling the most amount of water in a 24-hour period, I believe. So we're going through our final expansion, and I believe, once we're done with this third and final expansion at the GWRS, we'll be generating about 130 million gallons a day. So that is a lot of precious water and resources for a county and an area that desperately needs reliable drinking water. So that's a great thing to have in our community. Sometimes, those of us who live here aren't aware of it, but we have people visiting us from all over the world just to study our system and see what we do to address these water problems that we have. So today, the City of Santa Ana recognizes the month of May as Water Awareness Month and May 2nd through May 8th as Drinking Water Week. And we ask all of you to do your part, continue doing your part in conservation and be responsible users of the valuable resource that we have here as water. And we invited President Bilado to accept on behalf of not only the Orange County Water District, but a community that places a very high priority on this precious resource. And President Bilado, why don't you go ahead and give us a few words of wisdom? Let us know what we're doing over at the Water District and just go ahead and just share some information with us. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I'll be brief. I'm pleased to be here this evening. Santa Ana is actually our second-largest groundwater producer that we have, and I'm pleased to tell you that two weeks ago, we took action to raise the amount of water that could be pumped from the aquifer from 75% to 77%, and that will help to stabilize water rates and keep water plentiful and affordable for Santa Ana residents. And actually, that increase was a direct result of the advocacy of Councilman Sarmiento. I can sincerely tell you that. I look around the room, I've been on the water board for 18 years, I've been very fortunate. I got on just after my 18th birthday, of course. And I look around the room, and I see a lot of former colleagues. I've actually served with Councilman Solario. The mayor has actually served with me on the Orange County Water District. I see Councilman Reyna. And actually, I served with Councilmembers Franklin and Lutz in my formative years at the Water District. And I will tell you that the, our water basin is in very good shape. Last year, when we had a lot of rainfall, we took the initiative to buy as much water as we could from the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, and we're thankful to Councilwoman Martinez for selling us about 160,000 acre-feet of water, and we were able to replenish our basin, not to completely full, but we made great headway, and through that, we were able to actually raise the amount of water that can be pumped this next year. So we're keeping our fingers crossed for more rain from Mother Nature, and that would be a significant help to all of us. And on behalf of the Orange County Water District, thank you very much.
So I didn't realize we're actually going to be presenting President Bilado with a proclamation that you can proudly put in your office and display from a grateful community because, I guess what we didn't explain is that the mission that the Orange County Water District has is to manage and operate the groundwater that we have, the groundwater basin. So it's a really unique basin that we're on that many communities don't have the benefit of. So we can draw from that basin, and we have to make sure that it's fully replenished and that we're not overcharging and that we're responsible with managing this resource that one day could be dry if it wasn't managed well, and then we wouldn't have that resource to use. So it's an incredibly important responsibility. We take our roles very seriously, all of us who've served on it that President Bilado mentioned. I think you've outlived all of us, so, you know, you named a lot of people who were formerly there, and you're still there, so that's a good thing because I know you've directed this board very well under your leadership, and we've done some great things under your tenure. So let me present this proclamation recognizing Water Awareness Month and Drinking Water Week to President Bilado. There's a lot of wheresses, but just let me recite the last one. Whereas to ensure the continued success and quality drinking water, every resident can do their part by protecting our source waters from pollution, supporting the upkeep of our drinking water infrastructure, practicing water conservation, and getting involved in local water issues. We therefore, this mayor and council proclaim this Water Awareness Week and Drinking Water Week to President Bilado on behalf of the City of Santa Ana. Thank you all very much. Continue conserving, continue what we're doing. We're probably one of the best communities at conserving water, so we do take that responsibility seriously. Thank you so much. Big round of applause for President Bilado.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm always proud when I think of the many great leaders we have in our community. And what a great leader does is it helps other people rise, and so today, I'm really honored to recognize Monica Garcia, who's an officer of the consulate of Mexico, based here in Santa Ana. It's with great honor that I recognize Monica, who has motivated so many people in our community within the very broad Mexican consulate network, which includes a lot of folks here in Santa Ana, but really throughout the county and beyond. And she has a real talent, and it's a special one, and that's to inspire others to realize their dream. And that dream is often of starting a business, building a business, and helping others. Our partners in the Mexican consulate recognize Monica's skills right away and utilize them to have her facilitate leadership awareness training workshops for hundreds of Mexican nationals that reside here in Orange County. She has, in fact, devoted now more than 20 years of her life. She started young, like the rest of us. She's devoted 20 years of her life to providing professional development and leadership training to Orange County residents. Our community has received everlasting impacts through her hard work and dedication, and she continues to pay it forward each time. And I know now many of the people that she's helped are helping others move forward. The City of Santa Ana is very proud of recognizing Monica, and we do so in collaboration with the Mexican consulate, the Orange County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Orange County Small Business Development Center, for the outstanding service she has shared. And in fact, 60 have already started their own business because of the efforts of Monica Robles. So it's with a big heart and a lot of gratitude that, on behalf of the mayor and City Council, we recognize you. Gracias por todo.
Thank you very much. It is a privilege to be able to educate, motivate, and empower the leadership skills of our Latin community. It has been known through the last two years that there is a lot of people with a lot of skills, that they didn't have where to go, and they found the consulate and the people that were willing to volunteer to bring those talents up to life. And I do appreciate Councilor Solario to present this recognition for me, but honestly, it's because of the trust that I have received through our community and through everything we have done to support them. So thank you so much to all of them. Es un privilegio para mí recibir este reconocimiento para educar, motivar, y empoderar el empoderamiento y liderazgo en nuestra comunidad latina, y le agradezco al consulado mexicano su confianza por estos cursos de liderazgo y de emprendedores que hemos puesto al servicio de la comunidad. Son gratuitos. Y nada más una corrección, mi nombre es Monica Robles, a sus órdenes, y ha sido para mí un honor, y sigue siendo un honor. Tenemos, como dice nuestro council member, Solario, más de 60 personas aquí en el Condado de Santana, y continuamos trabajando también a través del Centro de Desarrollo de Pequeños Negocios. Muchísimas gracias, es un honor para mí.
And I was going to say, she spoke great English, but I know her Spanish would even be beautiful as well, so both languages, you speak beautifully and you do a lot of great things for our community.
Thank you, Councilman Solario, and congratulations to all our awardees. Next, we're going to do the closed session report. Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report out of the closed session meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We do have a few reportable items. In the first case of the Santa Ana Police Officers Association versus the city, the City Council agreed to a settlement of $350,000 by 6-0 vote, with Councilmember Sarmiento abstaining, as he had come in later to that discussion. Also, in the case of Rush versus the City of Santa Ana and its related case involving Mayor Plito, the City Council has declined to pay attorney's fees in this case by a vote of 4 to 1. Mayor Plito abstained due to the potential conflict, and Tina Harrow was absent. Mr. Councilman Vegas voted no. And that is all the reportable action that I have this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We're now going to be moving to the public comment. This is the time and place for the public to address the City Council on Consent Calendar items and regular business items. We have a couple speakers on non-agenda items. I'm going to ask for Dale Halvick, if he can please join me, followed by Cesar Medina on 20B and Francine Harris on 20B.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Just wanted to start off by saying thank you to Sergeant Blake of the Police Department. He's put in a lot of effort in working with the Park Santiago cleanup. He has a group of people that have assisted us in park cleanups that have been regularly scheduled every month, and he's also gone above and beyond by continuing that, even though the neighbors aren't organized. He's been working tirelessly to help us out. Unfortunately, over the last three nights, we've had two home invasion robberies while people were sleeping in their houses. One was a young family, they have a four-year-old and a one-year-old. People broke into the house, no harm was done to the residents, but it just scares people to death that this is happening. So we have a neighborhood watch group, they've been advertising, make sure you're vigilant and doing the due diligence of locking up your property and everything, but it's not enough right now, so hopefully that will get under control as well. Other thing I want to talk about, of course, is the 2525 main residential development. Last week, I attended the Historical Resource Commission meeting, and during that meeting, they were going to talk about a resolution to oppose 2525. Prior to that occurring, there was a request, a recommendation from the legal council to have that item pulled from the agenda. It was pulled from the agenda. It was unfortunate that they couldn't proceed with that resolution, and just kind of curious as to who really controls the agendas and public comments that were looked at for that line item. So hopefully, they can resolve the issues because they did have essentially approval from a previous meeting to talk about the thing. The legal council, planning department, both agreed that certain bullet points could be addressed on it, but yet it was pulled, so hopefully it'll get back on the agenda at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe we have our next speaker. Didn't you already call out Mayor Protem?
Alcalde Pulido, miembro del Consejo del Council. Mi nombre es Cesar Medina, y soy miembro del Santa Ana Senior Center, del Adversory Board, y hemos venido aquí para agradecer, agradecerles la aprobación para el fensi y el baño como parte de una estrategia para mejorar el nivel de vida de los residentes de Santana. Porque en Santana, porque en Santana se puede vivir mejor.
I'm Cesar Medina, a member of the Santa Ana Senior Advisory Council, and I'm here to thank you because of your approval of the fence and restroom, because this improves the quality of life in Santa Ana. You can live better in Santana.
Good evening. My name is Francine Harrison. I'm the chairperson for the Santa Ana Senior Advisory Board, and I'm here to thank the mayor and all the council for helping us to get this fence. That we haven't waited too long, we just thank God for the fence and the restroom. And I'd like to applaud each and every one of you for standing by us seniors, and because that senior center there is historic. And we thank you for helping us to get this fence, and the seniors would like to give you a hand clap, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming down. Michael Ovala, followed by Francine. That was Francine, so Michael.
Hi, thank you. It's Ovai. Appreciate the time. I just wanted to, I'm Park Santiago Chair for the Park Santiago Neighborhood Association, and I wanted to voice my objection to the 2525 projects. I'm speaking for myself and for the neighborhood. I think you've heard most of the spiel already, so I'll keep that short.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, besides the traffic and the issues that it's going to bring to our neighborhood, what I really wanted to speak about tonight, on top of that, was the homeless issues and the parks. So Sergeant Blake has been doing a great job. Our Councilman Jose here came to our last park cleanup. Thank you very much. It was great. I'm glad you had the opportunity to see that. We've been doing it every two months for about a year now, and we basically haul out dumpsters full of trash and lots of needles. And we'd appreciate it if you keep the needle exchange out of Santa Ana as much as possible because it's not helping anybody. And more security in the park, Sergeant Blake with the horses, I know they stepped up patrol. I was personally threatened, taking a picture of a homeless encampment Friday morning, submitting it to Colts, basically chased out of the park. I live six houses from the park, so I had to walk several blocks away from my house, so I didn't have several homeless people following back to my house. So that being said, I'd appreciate everything you can do to pick up or give more attention to our park, to the north side, to the riverbed, all the way through to the Santa Ana River Trail. And, you know, if the 2525 project happens, we're going to have three years of construction there, at least, and it's going to be just the haven for homeless people and more crime. And right now, our neighborhood isn't safe, so thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, let me bring attention back to the council. Did we already ask City Attorney to report out?
Yes.
We did? Okay, so now, let's go to the consent calendar. We've had three speakers already. Any items council members want to call?
Mayor, I'll be abstaining on 11A.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining on 11A.
11A.
You have to abstain too, Mr. Mayor.
I will abstain as well on that item for previously mentioned reasons.
Just for reference, just wanting to make reference, I'm a no on 22A, 25C, and 25D.
Can we note that for the record, please, Madam Clerk? I would entertain a motion on the balance, if there is. Go ahead, Councilman Benavides.
I'd like to make, to pull 17A and 20B.
17A and 20B, I'd entertain a motion on the balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed motion carries. Let's go on to 17A.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is just a simple item, track map approval for 42 new homes coming into Ward 4, down by Sigerson High School. So I'm moving the item, just wanted to inquire from staff as to, I believe this might be, it's 42 new homes, I believe it's a gated community, and I've addressed the question before, but I want to get a better understanding from staff on the potential consideration of holding back on gated communities within the city. When you get out into more suburban areas, suburban cities such as Irvine, everywhere you go, it's a gated community, there's, I think, in my opinion, there's more of a separation, there's less community, if you will, less sense of community, more separation when you have closed and closed gated communities. More projects that are being proposed now within the city are coming with these gated communities, and I think that it should be something that we should discuss before we see them more proliferated throughout the city, and it gives, again, less sense of, in my opinion, less sense of a community and more of a, again, sense of separation. So, what would be the forum, the place to be able to have that type of conversation, is my question. City Manager, perhaps as a follow-up, you can, either yourself or planning, I imagine, could bring that before us.
I'd have to follow up with our planning staff to try to figure out what the mechanism would be.
Perfect, okay. If you can, that's just my note, and if you can do some of that follow-up, just as a point of conversation as we go forward with planning and projects within the city. This, I know we've seen this project before, and again, quality project, but I thought I'd bring that forward for future consideration and conversation. With that, I'm moving the item.
Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed motion carries. Do you have 20B?
20B, yes. So here, and we did have some of our leaders and seniors come and address us, I'll be moving the item as well, but I do have a question for staff. Since we are fencing, I looked in the, there wasn't any design, and so I'm just curious as to, we want to make sure that it's, that the area is protected, but at the same time, that it still continues to be a park and be inviting, so I don't know if we have a design yet.
Yes, good question. So it's very much in concert with the historical wrought iron fence on Minter House, which is right east, directly east of the park. So it's a continuation of that same design that the historical Minter House house. So the whole idea is not only for it to be functional for safety purposes in closing the park, but also to honor the legacy of the historical park with, so yes, there was a design incorporated in the whole bid process with regards to the type of fence that we wanted.
If you can just, I'd be curious just to have council get a chance to take a look at it. Just again, want to make sure that there's protective, at the same time it continues to be an inviting space.
Yes.
And I know there was at one point a project that the district did where there was iron fencing, but there was spikes that were kind of facing out towards the community.
I remember, that was, yeah.
Make it very inviting, so we should address it.
Yes, I know that case, yes, I remember. No, we'll definitely make sure that you get a picture of it.
Okay, excellent. With that, just move in the item, I think it's a good project.
Move that.
All right, we have two seconds. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed motion carries. Now, Madam Clerk, we're gonna go to the business counter, 58. Dave Hohen, you want to talk to us? Please come on down, sir, about 58.
Dave Hohen, longtime resident of Santa Ana. Thank you for having me, council. First of all, I wanted to congratulate you, all of you, on voting unanimously to support the lawsuit against all the other cities, to bring the county together in trying to get a solution to the serious problem that faces our county and especially our city. Secondly, I wanted to say, I go downtown a lot, Darren and I probably go down there way too much, but we see a lot of panhandling going on, and see a lot of crazy stuff. We're used to it, and so we know who's safe and who's not safe, but yet, there's a lot of new people that go into our downtown who don't know who's safe and who isn't safe. And so, I think it's important that we put some teeth to this measure that allows the police to use discretion and enforce this panhandling ordinance. I kind of think of them as, remember back in grade school when we had the lunch money bullies that used to come around and demand money out of you before you could pass? That's kind of what's happening downtown a lot of times, so I hope we get rid of the lunch money bullies, and encourage you to vote unanimously on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those approve, motion carries. 55A, this is a grant from the Orange County Transit Station Authority.
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 68, this is our annual block grant program, and I was talking to Mayor Protem Amona ago, and she suggested a two-week continuance.
Yes, I'll second that.
And 60B as well. So if that's the case, let's entertain that. Councilmember Solario?
Yeah, just one, I'm fine with this direction, but I just want to, again, request that staff on the summer lights program, that we work, at least with the sites that we might want to be at, so we can reserve those sites. I worry that just us delaying this so much will maybe hurt that a little bit. So, aside from this, if staff can kind of work on that program in advance, so we don't lose site that we may want to use. Thank you.
Yes, councilmember, there's actually one site that's being funded here, and that's a site around El Salvador Park, so staff is already working to make sure that we're ramped up and ready to.
Excellent, excellent, that's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you, thank you.
All right, so we have, I believe, a motion. Juan, do you want to say something? Go ahead, please.
If we could take a look at the second chance Orange County under number 68, just for the record.
All right.
And I support that motion. Second chances is to help provide homeless with jobs. We definitely have an issue with littering throughout our city, and so it'd be a perfect opportunity, and I think many of us on the council have been asking if we can possibly figure out a way to look at an organization that would be able to help the city, to help hire some homeless, to actually get them jobs, so that they can go out there in particular, making sure that they can go out there in our community with certain littering that we have throughout the city with the increase of the unsheltered homeless in our city.
All right, so we have a motion, a second to continue both 68 and 60B for two weeks, I believe.
Mayor will also have to continue Public Hearing A, which is related to the CDBG Annual.
All right, let's add that to the motion, if that's okay with the maker and the second.
Mr. Mayor, just on that point, I don't know if there was a lot of folks that came here just to speak for the public hearing. Okay, so then we don't inconvenience too many people. That's okay, thank you.
And if we do inconvenience them, we'll tell them that it was Councilman Solario's idea. I'm kidding you, I'm kidding you, Jose, kidding you. We have motion, a second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So now, what item are we on, Madam Clerk? We have 60C, and we have some speakers for 60C. I think right now the council's pretty happy with 60C and.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Would like to approve it. We have motion, a second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We have some speakers here. If you want to talk us out of it, come on up. If you like with what we just did, just go have a great dinner and say the city council got us to go home early. So you just, I think you just all got what you wanted, so congratulations to you. Thank you.
Yeah, continue for two weeks?
All right. All right, let's skip over 60D. Yeah, we might be done. Request a skip over 60D. 60E, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We might miss that guy too, then. They're asking me to skip 75B for a moment, so let's go on to, how about 80A for now? Can we do that? Let me entertain, this is a joint session of the city council and the housing authority. So let's take on item 80A, approval request for consent by Jamboree Housing Corporation to acquire limited partner's interest for cornerstone apartments. Is there a motion on that item?
Motion approved.
Mayor, which?
60, it's 88.
88, right now.
Item 88. It's a joint housing authority, city council agenda.
Okay, okay. I do have a comment back on 60, but.
Those in favor, please say aye.
We need a second.
We have, I thought we had a Jose and Juan, we had a motion, a second.
I motioned.
Got it, you did?
Yes.
But we had a second over here, I thought. Jose.
I'll second the motion, geez, Ms. Martin.
All right, the clerk can second it. Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now let's.
Mayor, on 60E, I wanted to record a no on that one. That's, I was actually reading some of my notes, and we went fairly quickly.
All right, can you please record a no vote by Councilman Benavides?
If I can just go ahead and make.
Go ahead.
So, part of the staff report includes, and this is part of, this is one project on East First Street, where again, the applicant has, it's been a changing story. The applicant initially came and presented to us that they were going to develop some projects, or developed a project of multifamily that would be affordable, that would be completely funded, privately funded, then later presented that they were going to be requesting some funds from the city. And in fact, Exhibit 5 on the, in the staff report, is a letter that the city drafted, that's page, I think it's 39 on that item, it's a letter from the city to the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee correcting some information that the applicant had submitted, indicating that the city of Santana had committed a $5 million contribution to this project, and the city had to send a letter to correct that misinformation that had been provided, misrepresentation there. So there's just a lot of concern that I think we should have around this project and the misinformation that's been provided. So my concern is that moving forward, I know that vote has been cast, my concern is that if we support this now, you know, does this potentially obligate us to support the project in the future and then allocate some funds toward this? And so for those reasons, I don't think we should.
Mayor Protem is suggesting to me we reconsider the item, but let's right now just speak more and hear it out.
I would request, like, staff to be able to address that point.
That's what I was. Why don't we do that, and then Councilor Sarmiento, would you want to speak?
Well, I was just gonna suggest that Mayor Protem is correct. I, again, we were bouncing around so quickly, I didn't even know that this issue.
So may we reconsider it? Vote a two-week continuance, or what do you want?
Reconsider, we didn't know that you moved with this item.
Got it, got it.
Reconsider the vote.
So we need a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider, yeah, the vote.
Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're reconsidering. So, but wait a minute, you request something of staff, Councilman Benavides?
Yes, if staff can come and address this, this is my, my question is that it's being recommended by staff, however, there is reason here, from what I'm able to see in the staff report, that there have been some misrepresentations and inconsistencies. So I would like staff, whether it be housing, or I'm not sure if it's planning or community development, agency staff to be able to address this. I see that our.
Right. Councilmember Benavides, if I may, until my housing staff comes up, you're very correct in representing the fact that we had concerns about the misrepresentations. We had concerns about the misrepresentations, so I directed my staff to go on record and state that we have not made any financial commitments to this project. As to why this is coming forward is because, right now, the city's density bonus does not have much discretion. If the application meets the standards, then they're entitled to get this bonus. It's one of the things that I actually have had a discussion with a couple members of council, maybe wanting to reconsider how we award those density bonuses, and maybe revisit the criteria. But that in a nutshell is how we ended up here. But we have clarified that the misrepresentation of financial commitment by the city was incorrect, and we made that directly to the agency involved.
And any background, Mr. Brown, you can provide with regard to, you know, what, how we learned about this representation of this commitment and part of the city, and why we were compelled to write to the tax credit entity?
Yes, of course, thank you very much, Councilman Benavides. In, when a developer submits an application to the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, the local jurisdiction is asked to review that project's application in something called a local reviewing agency project evaluation form. And so, as a part of our due diligence in reviewing the developer's application, we fill out a standard form, evaluation form, and submit that back to the Tax Credit Allocation Committee. And as part of our due diligence, we discovered that the developer had indicated that the city will commit $5 million to the financing for their project, and so we communicated to the Tax Credit Allocation Committee that that was not correct.
I recall, that was one of the points that we discussed when we last heard this project, when they were actually looking to apply for tax credits, that we were not committing any funds at that point. So it just makes this quite clear to me that they still submitted that representation. So the staff is recommending this, so can you speak a bit to that? City Manager mentioned that the density bonus, the way that we currently, that currently our policy is set up is such that we, I don't know, staff feels like they automatically have to recommend the density bonus? How does that come about?
Well, the financing for the project is different from the density bonus agreement.
Right, but what we're hearing tonight is a density bonus issue. So my question is, why are we, why is staff recommending this density bonus? What do we have currently policy on the books that makes it so that this recommendation is coming forward?
Okay, of course. So, per our municipal code, the density bonus agreement does require city council approval. This density bonus agreement before you applies the state's density bonus law, and then it applies an additional 35% density bonus provided by our city's housing opportunity ordinance. So as such, you know, through, the project was entitled in September, but it still requires a density bonus agreement to be fully approved to move forward, to develop. And so, as, per our municipal code, staff is recommending. And so as, per our municipal code, staff is recommending the density bonus agreement for this project to be, to proceed forward.
Thank you.
Yes.
However, I want to just to add, if there's enough concern by council, we can hold this over and have a little bit more review on this item.
I think that'd probably be best, and maybe quite a bit more review. Would you suggest a 30-day holdover, or how long would you need?
Mr. Mayor, is the applicant here that they can address this issue or not? Maybe our staff is moving forward. I mean, I do hear one concern, but I think what staff is recommending for this item are really some small items with respect to setback and other items. They're not any major items that we're really offering. And, you know, and we're hungry for affordable housing and with the homelessness crisis, it would be nice to move this forward, particularly this is for homeless seniors, as Councilmember Viejas mentioned, so... And I think too, from an entitlement standpoint, it's pretty far along, isn't it?
Comment from Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Sarmiento.
Thank you, I just have a quick question. And so 418 units of affordable senior community housing, we, I guess the question that I would have, based on the Santa Ana need, you know, because most of our seniors, and I asked this question earlier to our staff, currently live, you know, with their parents, with their siblings here in this community, and so I guess what senior population are we housing? Are we housing the Santa Ana senior population, or are we housing the county's senior population? And again, you know, our land is very precious as we're trying to address the affordable housing crisis situation, the homeless crisis situation. We need to make sure that if we're going to be supporting certain developments, that specifically one like this, where we're asking for 418 units of senior housing, when we already have over 6,000 units of senior housing here in the city, you know, I would like to see the actual figures of the senior population in the city of Santa Ana and the need, not the need for the county. Because I will tell you that as we look at the various senior housing stock now, many of these residents were not from Santa Ana, came here because we provided the senior housing. And so we need to be very thoughtful about how we move forward as it pertains to our, you know, development here in this city as we have these other crises.
All right, well, wait a minute, I think, Councilwoman Sarmiento, and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, yeah, I guess my concern is, is that we also don't want to delay this unnecessarily if there's a timeline or maybe some sort of milestone that they need to hit if this is going to cause some delay there. But I guess going back to the point that Mayor Protem raised, you know, I remember these, this project was brought before us as a tandem project. There was another larger project that was about maybe 600 or 700 units as well as this, they were both on First Street. So I remember them being brought together, and I remember us discussing parking issues, discussing a lot of other impacts that we had. But I remember it was presented to us initially as a majority of those units were going to be senior housing and a minority of those units were going to be family housing. And I remember we referred to that very point, that the need here in our community is for family housing, right? So I think those numbers were supposed to be inverted, so maybe there's a second project that's in the queue, that's the second half of this tandem proposal that was submitted to us. So what worries me is that, let's just say, for whatever reason, that second project doesn't get approved, doesn't move forward, now we have 418 units of senior housing exclusively. And what happens there is that, you know, if you look at what our need is, I think our need for senior housing is 7%, which is very low. Most of our need right now is for multifamily housing, two and three-bedroom units, and I see that the configuration of the units proposed is very small. So we're, you know, I don't know how much we bind ourselves, whether this is a perfunctory step, and, you know, later on when we talk about financing commitments that the city is going to make on behalf of the project, maybe that will delay it or rescind our obligation. But I'm just worried about creating expectations and, again, being bound to something that we're doing here tonight. So can you speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Sarmiento. It was originally our plan to bring the density bonus agreements for all three parts of this project collectively together. On May 14th, the planning commission is going to be considering the first point apartments 1 and first point apartments 2, which are the other components of this entire collective project. But the developer did request this density bonus agreement to be expedited, and, but it was originally our intent to bring all three, all three density bonus agreements back to city council together.
Again, is there a reason why this one's being accelerated before the other two?
Well, what I have from the developer is that the May 1 city council meeting is the only meeting remaining before we have to close with Citibank to preserve the bonds and rate lock, and there's no scenario where they would close without our density bonus. They are standing by, ready to do our rate lock this coming Wednesday as soon as we have an improved density bonus agreement, and then we must close on or before May 31st in keeping with our debt and equity commitment letters. So it has to do with their private equity financing.
You know, and I also recall that there was a financing proposal by the developer that they were going to use future in lieu funds for the next 10 years or so, and it was going to drain, not drain, but it was going to access those funds. So in essence, we wouldn't be able to build any additional housing from that in lieu fund, any affordable housing from that in lieu fund as a result of that commitment and obligation that we have. Has that financing proposal changed?
So on, that is a part of the item that is presented to you tonight in regards to the developer's request for, that they submitted on September 28th for project subsidy equal to 70% of the city's annual affordable housing in lieu fees collected from developers. The request was not approved by the city, and so that request was, again, that was not approved.
Right. So we don't know what the financing or what the alternative financing proposal is as a result of that not being adopted or approved by this council?
No, at this time, we don't know how the developer plans to finance this project.
Well, that's a concern.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, there...
Yes, Councilman Benavides.
Far too many concerns, there's been verbal misinformation or misrepresentation, now they've even documented, misrepresentation, there's a lot of questions and doubts. I'm going to make a motion that we deny this item 60E.
Okay, there's a motion to deny this item.
You know, I almost think that maybe we should give the applicant, since they're not here, an opportunity to come before us and maybe explain what the...
Continue it 30 days and reconsider it then?
Why don't we continue 15? Let's continue it to the next council meeting, just to get some, so it's a substitute motion, and I respect Councilmember Benavides's position, because I do think it's...
Well, so far it hasn't gotten a second.
Hasn't got a second, so...
And you can withdraw it. Why don't you go for your two weeks?
So I'll request a two-week continuance.
With the information that I requested in regards to...
Correct. All the questions, everybody asked.
I'll second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam City Clerk, what item next?
If we have work study session number one, an update on the mobile vending.
What I would suggest, in the interest of time, maybe let's dispense with that and have staff go into the second study session, which is the budget, I believe. Is there any opposition to that? Sal, you okay with that? We're in study session, and what I'm suggesting is dispense with the first one and go into the second one, which is the budget.
And Mayor, perhaps this is some of the same question?
We have, point of clarification, have we taken up 60D as a date?
They asked us not to.
We have some consultant, actually former director, acting director, who's on his way here, he should be here about 8 o'clock.
We're not ready yet.
And then we're also asking for a short delay on the public hearing B, the ward reboundry item, also waiting for the consultant to make his way in.
And if they don't make it, then we're going to adjourn the meeting and they'll have to come the next time. All right, let's go, study session on the budget, please. Who's got that, Ms. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our finance director will be making most of the presentation with help from our deputy city manager, and I'll be happy to kick it off.
update, and also the fiscal year 2018. Is your mic on?
Try that again.
Yes, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, tonight we're ready to present our third quarter budget update for this fiscal year, and also a trial budget for the next fiscal year, 2018-19, as well as a CIP budget proposed for next year as well. I'd like to just start with a brief overview. As I've mentioned in the past, we got together as directors, as your EMT, the very first Friday of this year, and we spent half the day focusing on the budget and the other half focusing on the major objectives for this year. When we looked at the budget, we started to figure out what, how would we approach it this year, and we came up with a set of governing principles. Be transparent and honest about the problem, use a comprehensive approach. Oftentimes, if you just focus on the general fund, we should look at all the funds. Establish a vision and develop a budget that promotes long-term sustainability, implementing best practices and a combination of reductions and revenue increases as appropriate. We didn't get in here in this predicament in one year, so we thought we'd embrace a multi-year approach to achieve the financial stability that we need, and it would probably involve focusing on core services and funding those core services. We'd also need to provide a very clear vision and direction from the leadership at the city to make this happen, and last but not least, we'd have to engage in a collaborative approach with all of our stakeholders. The framework that sort of spawned from this set of governing principles was to prepare a long-term financial forecast and to plan to achieve stability and sustainability for the next few years. Again, focus on funding core services, identify new ways of delivering city services at lower cost when appropriate, identify any revenue enhancements, and to engage with key stakeholders. So that's in a nutshell how we decided to approach this year's budget process. Now I want to actually have our executive director of finance provide a background and a budget history.
Thank you, Raoul. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers. I will be providing a historical view in terms of where we were and how we got here in terms of the budget. So I'm going to take you back in history for a second. In December of 2014, we had provided the city council a general fund forecast where we actually had shown that the city was actually moving in the right direction in terms of our revenues and expenditures. At that time, the city manager decided that, given the sacrifices that the city had made as a result of coming out of the recession, that it would provide it an opportunity to provide employees with half of the gap, in essence, as well as the community to benefit from the other half of the gap as well. So he did that by implementing a 2.5% increase in '15, '16, and '16, '17, and that resulted pretty much in the lines for expenditures versus revenues to line up. At this time, there were no other assumptions placed into the forecast because there were other elements that were going to be taking effect down the road that were going to be impacting both the expenditure line as well as the revenue line. So here I kind of highlight, it does not include what eventually would happen in terms of revenues, is the reduction in terms of the water transfer, the, as a result of moving graffiti back into the expenditure line that came down the road, the decision to basically get out of the ICE contract, and this is prior to PERS coming to us and basically letting all cities know and that they would be increasing our PERS rates in the future. One of the underlying trends, though, that I did want to point out, that even though we were in a good position, our expenditures were actually growing at a faster rate than our revenues. So as you have revenues, well, as you have expenditures growing at a faster rate, at some point, those lines have to cross. And given the pressures that we were experiencing as a resulting of our expenditure growth and our basically flattening of our revenue line, those lines have crossed, and that's the position we are in today. So as we moved into '17, '18, as the lines crossed, we experienced a $9.3 million budget gap. This budget gap resulted because of the increase in the revenues, I mean, increase in the expenditures that we had experienced, which included PERS increases of 4.8, health increases of 1.3, OCFA coming back to us and indicating that they would take the full value of their 4.5% contract increase of 1.3, and this actually begins the incorporation of the graffiti into the general fund as well. So that popped our expenditure line. After we adopted the budget, this is a timeline, because even after we adopt a budget, there are other decisions that get made during the course of the fiscal year that actually impact the budget. So I kind of just want to highlight that we did do a budget reading in June, and then in July 5th, we adopted not only the POA MOU increase, but we also adopted the budget as well. Now, in terms of the POA, when it was adopted, that city budget, there were offsets to the POA contract that were in place in order to mitigate the increases. This constituted, for example, that the police employees were going to contribute 3% more to their contract, that we would cap their health insurance, and this budget actually incorporated a move from a type 2 facility to a holding facility, which eventually we were looking to eliminate approximately, or reallocate 12 correctional officers to help offset that. The issue that occurred, though, is that in August, we approved the US Marshals contract, which basically, for all intents and purposes, meant that we could not move away from the correctional officers. We needed the correctional officers in order to ramp up for the US Marshals contract. However, the projected US Marshals contract involved that we were going to receive revenue of approximately another $10.2 million, although it would also increase our expenditure side by 5.9. So there was a positive gain there too, which would help offset some of the MOU increases that later would hit the budget. In addition, we also had homeless pressures, and so on, September 19th, we approved the homeless services manager, and then in November, we also approved additional combination building inspectors, 420, but we also had offsetting revenues, so we were fine there. And then in December, we approved the find, the balance of all the, the balance of the bargaining groups minus the part timers, but most of the bargaining groups were approved by December of 2017. So as a result of this, this actually resulted in our adopted budget moving to what we call now the adjusted budget, and on the revenue side, it increased our revenues to 235. The bulk of that increase, obviously, was the US Marshals contract. So for the most part, our top six revenues are in alignment with our revenue trends, which we show in the green on the chart. Right now, even though you may see sales tax at 54%, we get over 40% of our sales tax in the last quarter, so we feel that's going to be in alignment. Our property tax is really booming, so we feel confident in terms of our property tax. Our utility users' tax has been lagging over the last few years, a lot has to do with the cap and trade, the electricity component of it, which has been lagging tremendously. Business license actually is fine, it's been improving, every year we get additional business licenses. And our hotel visitors' tax is, you know, for the most part, will come in, we believe come in. Now, the two areas that we do highlight are the jail revenues and the medical marijuana. Obviously, the jail revenues is a big, you know, is a big highlight for us because with the US Marshals and the ramping up, we may fall slightly short here. Currently, they were supposed to, we were projecting 10.2, we think possibly that we may hit eight or nine million, so just slightly short, but nothing major. But you have to realize... But you have to realize, at the same time, they haven't ramped up all their expenditures either, so there should be some offset there. In terms of our expenditures, most of our departments are going to probably hit right on target in terms of their allocated budgets. As you see here, you know, we're supposed to be at about 73% in terms of our overall trends. At the bottom line, we show 73.7, but most of that is really because of the fire department. When we initiate the contract, we actually make two payments at the beginning of the year, which is kind of pulling that 73.7 and up. We don't make the payment in June, so that will actually even out. But we believe that because of the MOU increases, that most departments are pretty much going to absorb their entire budgets for the year. So what does that mean for us? So if you recall, we had indicated that we probably need about 9.3 in order to bridge the gap. Right now, we're projecting our revenues to hit 230, 2.2, and our expenditures to hit 240. That difference there is 8.1. What I've pulled out is because of the decision in terms of adult use. We believe that the adult use could be a factor in minimizing how much additional one-times we would be able to use. So right now, we're projected for year-end, potentially to hit 6.1. That would allow us, if we could do that, that would allow us to use more one-times for future budgets like 18, 19. Now here, we provide the vacancy report in terms of the overall city. We distinguish between general fund vacancies and non-general fund vacancies. If you notice, on the last column, we actually identified the unfunded positions as a result of what previously was identified as attrition. So if you remove that from the 127, we have approximately 70 vacancies. That doesn't mean that they're vacant, per se, because there are recruitments that are taking place, so eventually, those positions may get filled, but for the most part, as a result of those vacancies, we've been able to absorb most of the MOU increases that the, that the council has approved. Now, as we move forward to 2018, 2019 general fund, we're projecting a budget gap of 17.1. Now, in relation to the 17.1, most of these increases are resulting, again, with PERS, with health increases, with OC, with the Orange County Fire, and we believe that we've now, the city, with the City Manager, we've developed a strategy in order to address the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city, and so this is something that we, we're going to be looking at to incorporate, and you will see a beginnings of that. The Deputy City Manager, Robert Cortez, will go a little bit further in terms of the budget plan later during this presentation, but we, you will see elements of the, of the plan in addressing the 17.1 budget gap. So here are the increases. So if you recall, the base budget for '17, '18 was about 240. So if you start, start adding up all the additional elements that are impacting the budget, for example, the PERS increases of 5.9, the MOU increases now that we have to absorb into the budget of 3.1, additional, obviously, were, this is the last year for the strategic plan before a renewal, the contract increases for OC Fire and Care. When we decided to go back into the US Marshals, we only, the time that it was adopted, we only had 10 months, so the 1.2 is a reflection of the final two months that we need to build into the budget. The Workers' Comp Fund is an area that has been hurting for the last few years. Last, last year, we adopted a 1% rate increase, and part of the plan was to increase the workers' comp rate by another 1%, so this is a reflection of that. Obviously, we've had health insurance increases of $746,000, and then there's a recommendation to add an additional payroll manager. So how are we, how are we going to address the 17.1 million deficit? So at a high level, what we're looking at, obviously, are some cost reductions, some revenue increases, the use of one-time monies or unallocated fund balance, and some additional one-time revenues in order to get down to a remaining deficit of 2.05. As you recall, when I mentioned earlier, if we can limit the use of the 9.3, and most of it that I showed you for '17, '18, and right now, I was projecting 6.1, we could use a portion of that, those funds, in order to mitigate the 2.05 million that still remains in this 17.1 deficit. So getting down to the next layer, in terms of what type of ongoing cost reductions are we looking at? So we're looking at, obviously, departments providing us recommendations in terms of what they could provide in assisting with, with the budget. They've identified 2.1 million, which I will show to you in a little bit, what those really mean. There's other cost-saving strategies that we want to collaborate with the new Human Resources Director. Then we wanted to actually reduce the strategic plan funding to what's been actually being spent over the last few years, and we think that we can reduce it by 700,000. And then we're looking to do a PERS prepayment of this, of the safety side of the business, which basically means we're going to fully fund our, our, our PERS requirement, two PERS in July, and that would net out for us a $500,000 savings. On the revenue side, the commercial cannabis is still an element that we believe has been a positive factor for the city in terms of addressing not only the city's budget, but as a new revenue that the city can gain upon. Currently, right now, on the commercial cannabis side, we're only recognizing 2.6 million in the budget, but we anticipate that probably being a little bit more, but since it's kind of a new game for us, it's kind of hard to gauge. And then we currently have a user fee study that's ongoing. We anticipate that hopefully by fall, that we will have completed and implemented the user fee study, and basically, that's a cost recovery component. In other words, recovering our, our costs at 100% across all areas. And then the, the last element is, we actually went out and asked the employees, what do you guys think in terms of, how can the city raise money or other revenues, you know, and they had identified advertising, marketing opportunities, and so we included this. You know, there was, there's some ideas that we need to explore, but we wanted to recognize the employees for at least, you know, providing us some areas that we could, we could look at. Okay, so in terms of the, deeper into what the budget elements that we're looking at mean, so in terms of the police department, the, the first element is, is the school crossing guard agreement that we currently have, where there will be, we're looking, we're seeking a cost-sharing element with the school district, and hopefully, we'll be able to achieve that. They also anticipate aramatic contract savings in terms of the food element, in terms of the jail. There are also, they currently think that they can delete five part-time correctional service officers, or the equivalent of two full-time officers. There's also, they're looking to delete two correctional record specialists that are currently vacant. In addition, the, they're, they currently have been providing additional security services on the south side of the police building, and, and they, currently, they don't feel that they need that any longer. In terms of ongoing revenue increases, they're looking to increase their parking-related revenue through additional parking control officers, and then seek reimbursement from OSHA in terms of their school resource officer that would be fully funded. Now, on the parks and library, what we're looking is to seek alternative funding for the 5K and the Plaza Navideña events. Now, one of the big elements, obviously, is we're looking to close the library on Sundays. That's, right now, the library's only open for four hours on Sunday, so, and foot traffic is minimal on that day, so that's one area that we're actually looking at. We're redo, hoping to reduce four part-time vacant positions in terms of the summer sports programs, reduce landscape maintenance contract services, and then seek alternative funding for the Catalina trip. In other words, reduce the trip cost by 50%. Currently, right now, it's my understanding, we send about 79 participants, so this would actually, at this level, reduce it by half if we can't find alternative funding for, for the balance. In terms of planning a building, planning a building that looked at its various line items, and they've identified about 156,000 across all line items related to their contractual services, another 13,000 reduction in operating materials and supplies. Public works, we went out, if you recall, council approved the LED project for streetlights. So there's going to be savings in terms of what we pay for utilities. So they've identified that as a, as a savings component because that activity's actually embedded in the general fund. And then, obviously, the miscellaneous departments have all identified line items within their budget that could be reduced in order to address the deficit. So on top of not only looking at reducing the budget, we also had to consider elements that were important or additional budget requests that were really going to be included back into the budget. We looked at it two different ways. One, if there was offsetting revenues that we could utilize that we, and, or that they were cost-neutral, they, those were approved. So, for example, the three parking control officers would be offset by the additional revenue that they would bring in through the writing of the tickets. The reallocation of positions really identified where positions could be more efficient and effective by having a different type of position, and the departments would make it work within their budgets. So, for example, we had a litigation assistant move to a paralegal, or a senior office assistant move to an executive secretary. This would make, these were identified as efficiencies and effective positions for departments. One of the big items that we've, that the parks had identified was adding more maintenance in terms of restrooms at the various city parks. So the 20,000 was, in essence, to pay for an additional, in order to do maintenance in terms of the restrooms twice a day. So we decided that was important, so we put it back in. Obviously, the November election is an element that, you know, needs to happen, so we identified that component. We added money back in, so in order to ensure that planning and building can continue with their general plan. And obvious, and one of the biggest items that we're looking to provide a change to is actually moving away from our current salary-based matrix, which was established long, maybe 50 years ago, and, and move to a different, basically to modernize our payroll system to a more updated system by, through an upgrade. So we have identified money for that. One element, in order to address funding for the last three items, what we identified, as we look through the budget, one, one of the areas that we've, we're looking at, and we've been working with departments actually for the last year and a half, are what we call agency deposits. When developers come in or individuals come in, they sometimes place a deposit, and we hold it for them. So they don't necessarily come back and, or identify those deposits. So what we've done is actually put out a public notice, and we've tried to identify all the individuals in terms of these deposits. If they do not come back and claim them, then those deposits would then be borne by the city, and we could utilize that. So we're, so right now, we currently have been doing a public notice. We would come back and identify those, and if, like I said, if, if nobody comes to claim them, then we would use those monies in order to offset some of these costs. But we didn't want to, you know, even though we've identified those priorities, there's still a lot of different priorities that the city still needs to contend with, that have been, have, we've heard at various meetings, and basically, the council has talked about. Obviously, one of the elements is the quality of life team and homeless funding, the need for more youth programming. One of the, obviously, in terms of our revenues, we need to enhance our economic development. We don't want to obviously stop the police officer recruitments. We want to make sure that we maintain our reserve policy funding levels. Early on, at a previous council meeting, we identified all the deferred maintenance, not only of vehicles but of facilities as well. Information technology infrastructure continues to be underfunded, so we, we got to make sure we keep that on the table. Currently, we're still undergoing the enterprise fund compliance, and so those are issues we need to address. The workers' compensation is an area that we need to contend with since the Workers' Comp Fund, as a result of outsourcing, primarily because of outsourcing of fire, has really hit us hard in terms of our liability claims. We will continue to have liability increases over the course of time. A big area that we need to address is obviously the retrofitting of City Hall in terms of the seismic condition. SARTIC is probably, which is the entryway for the city, and it's going to be big as it relates to the streetcar, has to be improved, and ultimately, we need to recognize that we can, we will continue to have PERS challenges over the course of time. And so I highlight this here in terms of, of PERS, of what the city's facing long-term as PERS tries to fund its activities in terms of its, making sure that the retirees are able to be paid, obviously, long-term, and what this means for the city. So as you can tell, you know, the impact to the city over the course of time is going to be increasing every year for a while, and then, and just recently, the PERS announced that they were decreasing their amortization schedule from 30 years to 20 years, which will also increase our rates. Also, what we wanted to highlight is that we've had community budget meetings. We've actually done five of these at various areas throughout the city. Some of the recurring themes is, you know, the, the common recurring theme is the need for diversity and youth programs. The youth basically recognize that one shoe doesn't fit everybody, and so they kind of are looking to see what other programs we can provide that could capture the attention of all the youth in Santa Ana. So obviously, it's the investment in youth. They talk a lot about moving funding from public safety to youth, the need for additional parks. One of the other elements, obviously, especially when we go out into the community, is the need for affordable housing and the addition of community programs. And, and, you know, and one of the big elements is, we always hear, it's, it's really interesting, is the addition, is the need for neighborhood street improvements. That comment continues to pop up. Now, the other one, and the other one along with the street improvements is our parking issues. They, they also highlight that. And then, obviously, is the addressing of the homelessness, homelessness issues, but given everything, all the activities been going on, that, you know, we're able to address that. In terms of city budget presentations, one of the important things for the current City Manager is transparency, and he wanted to make sure that all employees and bargaining groups received information as it relates to city's financial position. So we've had 10 presentations in terms of presenting the budget and the current, and the city's current financial position as it relates to PERS. So we actually give them a, an overview in terms of what's happening at PERS in addition to the budget. These, I think, have been very successful. We've had a lot of positive feedback in terms of these presentations. And then with that, I'm going to now turn it over to the Deputy City Manager, Robert Cortez.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council Members, good evening. You overheard our City Manager talk about the importance of transparency in providing information to our City Council, our community, and our employees, and that is because, as representatives of the city, we have a responsibility to provide true and accurate information. We are fiscal stewards of the city's financial, or finances that we receive. So one of the things that, that I need to mention as, as part of this general fund trend is, what we're presenting here today is a base budget. It is status quo at the, at this point in time. It does not include any raises, any MOU increases, and as Francisco highlighted, there's a number of additional priorities and needs that the city still has, such as the 218 assessment that we're going through and, and the results of that, the need for additional staffing in terms of PD resources, the need for addressing workers' compensation, liability, capital improvement. There's an array of different needs that this, that this organization has. But we're presenting here today is a baseline budget. Any changes that occur during the course of the fiscal year or decisions made by the City Council will then be reflected here on a go-forward basis, but it's extremely important for me to, to state that this is a base budget. It is based on status quo. Taking a look at the changes in our revenues and expenditures as a result of the decisions that have been made in the that have been made in the past, it's easy to understand why there is some, potentially some clarity that needs to be provided from a, from a staffing perspective. And that's because in the past years, as Francisco mentioned, the city was in a financial position where revenues exceeded expenditures, and that was primarily because of the recession that we went through. The city of Santa Ana went through a significant cost-reduction strategy that ultimately resulted in almost reducing the full-time staffing levels by close to 40%. It included the outsourcing of, of the fire, all at the same time while our revenues started to increase. So, you had periods of time in which you had revenues that were exceeding expenditures. That allowed the city of Santa Ana to achieve a fund balance that allowed for us to fund our reserve levels, which, according to GFOA and other financial institutions, say that we should maintain anywhere between 16.67% up to 20%. And it was this city council at the time, based on a decision to approve a fiscal policy, that allowed us to generate those, those fundings and allocate the funding to put us in a much stronger financial footing. So, there's a lot of credit to go to the city council for, for taking those measures in place. Over a two-year period of time between fiscal year 14, 15, all the way through 16, 17, we saw a dramatic increase in the number of positions that were brought back on board into the city, and number of raises that were, that were provided to the employees. Because, like Francisco had mentioned, the city manager at that point in time felt it was extremely important to take some of those gains that we had in those years and provide some of those gains back to the community in, in terms of programs and services, and also to provide MOU increases and raises to the employees. So, the result of those two years, Santa Ana experienced a 15%, or a 13% increase in its labor cost overall. It's equivalent to about $15.5 million increase in our base budget, which was, is now reflection here. So, taking a look at fiscal year 16, 17, the culmination of new programs and services that the city's offering, raises, some other increases that we had, led to the culmination of 16, 17 now experiencing a deficit. So, last fiscal year, we closed, we closed the general fund, which is Fund 11, okay, with about just under $400,000 in the negative. Because of that, and those continued trends and increases in terms of salary, and labor, and pension, and health insurance, and workers' compensation, we're going to continue to see that gradual increase over the course of time. And again, I do have to mention that this budget that you're, or these line items that you're seeing here, expenditure and revenue, these are base budget. They do not include any raises. Again, they do not include any additional increases to the base budget. But one of the things that this slide does illustrate is that the current situation is not sustainable. I mean, maintaining the same level of service, the way in which we capture revenue, it just needs to change. Santa Ana needs to transform itself into a new organization that is more nimble, more effective, more efficient, more productive, and we need to find ways and strategies and strategies in which to address the deficit. This graph may not illustrate the impacts of the deficit, so I will turn to this next slide, which helps to depict what the deficit looks like in the future years. So, I mentioned earlier that in the past years, we did have revenues that exceeded by far your expenditures. So, you see here in fiscal year 13, 14, 14, 15, and 15, 16, the years in which we had, you know, revenues that exceeded expenditures, but then you started to see the decline. As you started to see the revenues and expenditures meet, as Francisco explained, you start to generate these, these deficits. And it's important to highlight because it may not be as transparent in the previous slide that we have presented to the city council in terms of how we're generating those deficits, but this, I think, paints a much clearer depiction of where we're headed if we continue with the current trends and the current path. So, what is Santa Ana doing? So, over a series of meetings that we had with our executive management team, and also through discussions with the city council via our city manager, we're developing a plan of action as to how to address the, the budget shortfall that we are facing. So, one of the goals that we had set is, current fiscal year that we're in, we had adopted a budget with a $9.3 million deficit, and we were plugging that with $9.3 million worth of one-time monies, or these were unallocated fund balances that we had. So, through the direction of, of our city manager, we're looking at opportunities within every single department. How can we reduce costs? You know, can we hold certain vacancies that may not be deemed as critical, and hold them vacant so we can generate some of the savings? And as Francisco illustrated earlier, instead of using 9.3, we may only be using close to 8.1, or maybe 6.3, I believe, depending on how the revenues on adult use are generated through the rest of this current fiscal year. There are additional things that we're going to be doing, looking at revenue enhancements, you know, during this, you know, in terms of cost recovery. But we're also starting to have discussions in, in terms of defining what core services are, what are priorities, and maybe if service levels or service delivery needs to change in order to, to meet our, our budget expectations. The plan for fiscal year 18, 19, and you hear us talking about the use of one-time monies because 18, 19 should be viewed as a bridge year. 18, 19, our goal here is to limit the use of one-time monies, you know, start to make some strategic changes in, in, in the culture of the organization that will result in cost savings long-term. We're also looking to, to see if we can start looking at core services and define what core service is within every specific department. Fiscal year 19, 20 is what we're calling transformational year. This is where we, where we anticipate on implementing many of the suggestions and recommendations that are going to be coming for, before the city council. This is going to include service delivery model changes, limiting the use of reserves on a go-forward basis, you know, and continuing to implement organizational changes throughout the entire, the entire city. Ultimately, the goal is that by fiscal year 20, 21, is that we have a, a more stable budget by then. What this looks like in, in terms of numbers, because we do illustrate the, the deficits here, again, current fiscal year was addressed through the use of one-time monies. Again, the goal is to preserve as much of that as we possibly can to utilize in the next fiscal year. For fiscal year 18, 19, the deficit is 17.1. Our goal is to achieve cost savings and revenue enhancements of about 7.9. We will be using the last remaining portion of the unfunded, or the unallocated fund balances. We intend on using about $250,000 that remains from a Nexus Development, revenues that we had received in the past, but again, that leaves about $2 million shortfall. And this is the area that we will be working along with our city manager and our departments in terms of trying to achieve additional savings during this current year to bridge that gap. One thing to note is that any ongoing revenue increase or expenditure reduction should be considered a deficit reduction as well. And as illustrated here on the slide, what's important to note is that if, for fiscal year 18, 19, if we achieve 7.9 million in ongoing deficit reduction measures, it reduces your structural deficit on an ongoing basis. So, for 19, 20, we're anticipating on achieving about $16.2 million in ongoing deficit reduction measures. We will, we're projecting on potentially utilizing our economic uncertainty monies and dipping slightly into the operating reserves in order to balance that budget, with the intent that for fiscal year 20, 21, we should be implementing additional changes to the equivalent of 22.1 million to bridge the gap for the remainder of this, this period of time. One thing to note is that the fiscal policy that we do have in place requires that the city maintain anywhere between 16.67, all the way up to 20% of operating reserves. If we do tap into the operating reserves during fiscal year 19, 20, we will need to seek council approval to make changes to that fiscal policy going forward. So, with that, I will turn it over to William Galvez, who will cover the capital improvement program.
Good evening, I'm mayor and members of the city council. I'd like to present to you a summary of the capital improvement program for fiscal year 18, 19. These four pictures represent the four main categories that we deliver projects under, and that's, uh, street improvements, traffic improvements, utility drainage and lighting improvements, and city facility improvements. For fiscal year 18, 19, we have a little over $40 million in capital improvement projects. What this represents is really a snapshot of the, of the project-specific funding that we've been able to secure for these projects. And so, for, uh, street improvement projects, we're at about $12.8 million for traffic safety improvements, about 16.7 million. Utility and drainage and lighting improvements, $4 million, and city facility improvements, 6.5 million. Again, this is a snapshot of what these projects look like from a funding perspective going forward. A lot of these projects will take two and three years to deliver, so it doesn't quite give you a snapshot of exactly what's going to be happening in this next year. It's really more from the funding that we've been able to secure. For street improvements, on the $12.8 million that, that I mentioned, we have a few planning projects that are, that are in the infancy stage, but most of our roadway improvement projects are being delivered via 15 CIP projects totaling a little over six, $11.6 million. And then, we do have a, a two-streetscape-type improvement projects totaling $590,000. So, that kind of gives you an idea as to the types of street improvement projects that, that we're able to secure. For traffic safety improvements, we have four planning projects totaling $673,000. Traffic signal improvements are pretty expensive. We have three of those at $465,000. And then, we have mobility and safety improvements. Our active transportation projects that we've been able to secure, some of those projects fall in this category, so we have 12 projects totaling over $15 million. And again, that's, uh, that's great leadership on, on behalf of the council, and great work by staff in being able to secure these funds. For public utility and drainage improvements, we're at about $3.2 million. We have some sewer projects. We have four specific projects in the CIP totaling $575,000. Of course, we have our water improvements being funded by our water fund, and that's $2.2 million. Facility and drainage-type projects, we have two of those, $350,000. And then, under the street lighting financing, we actually set aside $130,000 for streetlight improvements for maybe providing lighting in underlit areas. So, we're hoping to, to be able to address some of these community concerns with, you know, locations in the city that are too dark. And then, for city facility improvements, $6.5 million. Seven recreation-type improvement projects totaling a little over $4 million. And then, the park and zoo facility projects, we have 12 of those, a little over $2.5 million. And a lot of the funding here is CDBG-type funding, and I just wanted to remind the council that the CIP project is being funded primarily via project-specific funding, so we don't have too much discretion as to what to spend. It takes us a long time to go after funds, and again, this is the, the culmination of us securing $40 million in CIP projects. Some of the featured programs that I just wanted to, uh, remind the council that we're working on, SB1 funding, we're getting $9.5 million of SB1 funding. That's one of the reasons why this year's CIP is 40 million. It's because we've incorporated the additional $9.5 million in SB1 funding. Otherwise, we would have fallen back to $30 million, which is what we've been averaging for our CIP on an annual basis. We are working on fiber optics. We believe that-
If I can jump in here, if I can just jump in here.
Excuse me?
On, Mr. Galvez, as you mentioned, SB1 funding, I just wanted to highlight for everybody, for the audience, and for the council, that this is being threatened. And in fact, I was just talking to the Mayor Protem about that, but I just wanted you to ma- make everybody aware that there is a initiative. So, this funding here may not be around as much as we'd like to see it, but we are doing everything to make sure that we're capturing the opportunity while it's here through the leadership of Mr. Galvez and, and his team.
Yes, and, um, talking about SB1 funding, we are working on some informational flyers that we can send out, and again, we're going to be informing the, the community as to what's at stake, so we're working on that. As far as fiber optics goes, it's a great opportunity for, for the city not only to provide data services to underserved and the, the digital divide that, that Santa Ana suffers, but it's actually an opportunity to maybe create some revenue to the city. So, we've had discussions with the city manager, and we have our consultant Magellan who's on board, and we've been specifically talking about how we can make this work for the city. Of course, you all know about the street lighting LED conversion project, which was, the financing was approved by, by the city council a couple of meetings ago, and so, we're excited to complete that retrofit. We think that we can, uh, complete the upgrades and transition of all of the streetlights by October or November of this year. That's really great news because the sooner we can convert and, and get the, the, the streetlights under the city's ownership, the sooner we can begin to get the savings so we can pay off the, the financing, the debt service. Active transportation, I had mentioned that before, that through the leadership of the city council and the great work from staff, active transportation, it has, uh, we've been able to secure a little, a little over $11 million in, in funding. And we are going through an asset management implementation, and that is basically a GIS and, and technology service where we're going to be able to catalog and track all of the assets in the city, and so, we'll be able to, to report and map out and really, uh, track and monitor the conditions of our assets citywide. So, that's an exciting effort. And, uh, this year, we want to come out to, to, to bid. We had identified $100,000 in, in our landscaping operations, and we want to use that $100,000 to convert, uh, the medians on 17th Street, and convert the irrigation on those medians from a turf irrigation to a tree irrigation system. So, that's going to be out to bid in, in a week or so. So, that's another important pilot project that we want to see how that turns out. And then, of course, we also are working on AMI, which is the automated metering infrastructure, and, uh, we have our consultant on board. We're making progress. I have nothing really to report at this time, but it's a major undertaking that, that the public works is, is going through. So, a snapshot, this is a seven-year snapshot. This goes back a couple of years. This is, again, to give you an idea as to the funding that we've been able to secure over a seven-year period, going back three years, the current year, and going forward three years, and it's $184 million. That's just a little over, excuse me, a little under $30 million a year. So, the reason why this year's CIP is 40 million is primarily due to the SB1 funding. And, as you know, we have been, under the leadership of our former public works director, Fred Musavipour, we've been providing this executive report on a monthly basis to the city council, and that way, you could see the, the progress on how we're doing and delivering CIP projects. And, uh, so, this is a monthly report, and it's just one slide of four. And, um, at this point, I think that the next steps, Mr. Cortez, do you want me to go through that?
So, Madam Mayor Protem, members of the city council, so this is really the next steps in terms of our budget development for fiscal year 18, 19. Work study presentation in two weeks, June 5th, the first reading of the budget and CIP program, June 19th, the second reading of the budget and CIP and adoption, and then July 1st, you know, we start with the new fiscal year. But I'm also looking forward to continuing to meet with you individually as we go along and get into more detail to address some of the questions that you've posed to us today.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you to staff for providing this budget review. Questions from the council? Councilman Beneditz?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Do have a few questions, jotting down some notes as we, as we went. I'll go back to the, to the front, to the top of the presentation. There was a communication at the US Marshals, we had expected for revenue was 10.2 for this current year, and I'm, I'm curious as to whether we're on track to realize- And I'm, I'm, uh, curious as to whether we're on track to realize that, that ten point two, uh, in revenue for this year, or if it's going to be different than what we had projected. And in essence, was that a, a wise, uh, part of the reason that we entered that contract? We anticipated that it would have been, that it was going to be, you know, revenue positive, you know, for us? And just want to see if that's, if we're realizing what we had projected.
So as far as the, the jail revenue, uh, initially when the budget was adopted, we had anticipated generating about two point seven million dollars in, in jail revenue. With the addition of the two-year short-term agreement with the U.S. Marshals, it was increased, I believe, by an additional ten million dollars. So right now, we're projected to hit the ten million dollars in terms of jail revenue. Uh, the jail revenue does come in, uh, there's a lag time in terms of the process, in terms of the billing and when we receive the funding, but by the end of the fiscal year. And with the accruals, we should be hitting that ten million dollar mark.
If I may add, part of the challenges have been staffing up for it. Because you have to have so much, you know, it's a regulated industry, and so you have to have a certain amount of staff in order to be, in order to be able to open up another pod and, uh, and accept more, uh, more customers.
Yeah. So from what I gathered, it looked like it was a ten point one increase, but a five point nine, uh, ten point one increase in, in, uh, revenue, but five point nine is what I remember seeing as far as increase in expense. So it's more like a four-point, some odd million dollar, uh, uh, net gain. So, uh, still a gain, perhaps not the full ten, but it's still, still an upside there. Couple of other, uh, questions. This is more of a, of a, perhaps another deeper conversation, longer-term conversation, but there was reference of the orange, that the, the OCFA contract. From what I, I recall, uh, and there, I know there's been a lot, number of changes over at OCFA over a number of, of last couple of years with regard to leadership, increases on charges and fees to the city, uh, also some, some, some threats from other cities, namely Irvine, of potentially exiting. So it seems like there is some, uh, lack of stability and, and uncertainty as to what the future of OCFA may look like. Something I think might make sense for us to be thinking about is, is our exit clause. Uh, just for, for us to, to look, at least be mindful of, of options, which, which I believe it's twenty twenty, and, and I think we have to, we, if we were to exercise something like that or even consider, that would be, uh, I think, I think it's sometime in twenty eighteen, if I'm remembering correctly, from when I was a, a, a director there. Uh, so, I don't know if I, it looks like Deputy City Manager might have some comment to that.
And Councilmember, if I may jump in here, is your question, we're talking about stability, are you talking about the prospect that some cities may pull out?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And costs and all as a result of?
To, to that point, we just had a meeting with, um, one of the assistant chiefs.
Laura Zeller.
Laura Zeller. And so she, um, mentioned to us that the, they call us the cash cities, you know, fee-based cities, are completely separate from the other cities. So if a city like Irvine decides to pull out, there, there should be no impact to us because the way we, Chief Black can, can fill in the blanks here, because he was in that same meeting, the way our, the way we're structured is strictly cost recovery from the service that we receive. So there's a firewall that I think the chief could better explain. So that was good to hear, because we were concerned about that same scenario.
That, that's correct, uh, council. The, uh, if Irvine should withdraw, or any entity within OCFA should withdraw, their amount of service being provided, as well as what we recoup from that, is equal. So there would be no upcharge by any single entity within the OCFA pulling out.
Uh, thank you for that, that information. So I think it's, it's, uh, when we entered, remember, one of the, uh, kind of selling points was this, this idea of, uh, uh, basically that the cost benefit when you have a larger pool of, of entities funding. So it's good to hear that we, there wouldn't be a potential impact, although it's, it's still kind of some, some question in my mind. It more, uh, something that came to mind just as we look at the fact that over seventy percent of our budget is public safety, which includes both, both police and fire. A couple of other, I'd follow-up questions are, are on other items. Thank you, Chief. On page twenty-two, there's a reference of the cab, cannabis revenue that's, that's projected at two point six, and that represents one-third, uh, is what I'm seeing. Uh, what is the, the, uh, the other two-thirds? Uh, can you speak to, to that?
Yes, yes, I can, Councilman. The, the two point six, the figure is one-third of the projected amount that's, that's based, basically solely on the projected floor area. Because there's two ways to calculate it. There's a minimum tax based on floor area, but if the, if this industry takes off that we, we anticipate it will, the actual, uh, sales tax based on gross receipts should exceed the minimum tax. This is based on an assessment of the, uh, floor area that we think would be part of this. Uh, and, uh, so it's not based on, on actual sales projections-
Okay.
But we hope that that will take off. The, the reason we put in a, a one-third is because for commercial cannabis, unlike a dispensary which has a potentially less tenant improvements required for manufacturing or, uh, distribution and, and cultivation, we anticipate there might be some more extensive tenant improvements that might take a little bit more time to get through the approval process, through the building and safety, uh, process. And, uh, so it's an issue of timing, how much we can project for next year. But once it takes off, we're hoping that it would be a lot more successful than that.
So this, this one-third represents one-third of the, just using the, the floor space formula?
The minimum tax, minimum fee, I'm sorry, the minimum charges based on floor area. It's not based on any assumptions on gross receipts, because we just don't have any data.
And why did, I'm just curious, why the one-third was used as the figure here versus some other, uh, uh, percentage or amount?
I think it was just an assumption of how much time it might take for them to, for the industry to get operational.
Okay. So, so that then is a follow-up, as we've been, uh, part of the policy direction that, that council has, has provided with regard to the cannabis industry and revenue, is that there would be, uh, designations of revenue toward, uh, and that's what I was, I was curious as to whether this third represented, uh, we've indicated a third to go towards, uh, enforcement, a third to go towards general fund, a third to, to go towards, uh, towards youth services. So is that not represented here at all?
That is not represented here i- in, uh, in this number. This number is just an, an estimate.
So an estimate of the overall, uh, an estimate of the, of the overall revenue?
Yes.
Okay. So as, as a follow-up, I would be interested in, in getting a better understanding as to how this, the, the policy direction of, of council with regard to how the revenue, the cannabis revenue will be, uh, used, how that is going to be reflected, particularly the enforcement side, uh, and the, uh, and the, and the youth services, uh, side. Part of the, the interest of council was that if we are going to enter this, this area of business, that there would be, uh, direct benefit to, to the community, also recognizing that this, uh, industry requires more regulation, requires more resources from both attorneys, uh, law enforcement, code enforcement. So that, that should be reflected, and I'd be interested in, in seeing that. And then that other piece, that, that youth services, uh, uh, education, uh, drug prevention education, other points that, that Councilman Salorio and others have, have made reference of. So I, I would imagine that that would be, again, shouldn't be reflected in the, in the budget, uh, in next year's budget.
Right now, we, we're, we're just looking at trying to plug the deficit, but we are trying to find ways to still accomplish the policy goals of the, the council through, um, the community benefit provision of the agreements. Uh, we're looking to see, once these things get started and, and ongoing, that we can have. In fact, I was just asked at the community, uh, at the CommLink meeting the other night by an applicant, saying, listen, we'd like to participate in the community benefit. Can we get a list of, of programs or, or entities that we can consider funding? Uh, some, so I think there's another, another way to get to those types of, uh-
And that's, and that's, and that was separate, right? That was one of the other, uh, issues or priorities when it comes to applicants coming in, that there would be a community benefit. However, the, the revenue itself was something that, that council here from the DICE gave direction as to how that revenue would, would be allocated, like, the, the actual revenue comes in, how we would expend it. So, uh, you know, I, I would, again, want to be interested in seeing how that is going to be reflected in next year's, uh, next year's budget. And we can discuss more, I don't want to, I know other councilmembers have also some, some questions. I do have a couple of other additional, uh, points. Across the board, right now, when it comes to, 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 uh, costs, uh, to reductions in expenses, has there been a, I know we've been discussing priorities or hoping to discuss priorities, uh, by, with you, and we've, that's been a, it's been continued time and again. When it comes to the, the, the cost, uh, savings or reductions, if you will, and what was reflected by this, by, in this report, in the departments, the various departments, is there a percentage across the board, or has any, have any priorities been, uh, given to, to try to minimize reductions, if you will, uh, to, to certain departments or agencies? Or how have those, the, the, the direction that has been provided to the, uh, different departments?
I'm sorry, good question. What we did is a series of approaches. In, on page twenty-two, we have the ongoing cost reductions. We said two point one of it would come from, uh, department budget impacts. What we did there is we asked the departments to look at a one and two percent scenario in terms of reductions. This came after I met with every single department and discussed their budget. I was looking for obvious places to save. What I found is that most departments were already pretty thinly staffed, you know, in terms of, uh, there wasn't any fat, so to speak. And, and in fact, there was a lot of need. A lot of them came with asks of, of, of me for, for their departments. So when it became apparent to do that, so we said, okay, let's look at a one or two percent. On top of that, separate from that, we have, well, we're looking at cost-saving strategies, which are, we're looking at, uh, labor strategies here that we need to discuss with our bargaining groups. That was separate. So what we did with the one and two percent lists is we went through them and reviewed them, and we said, okay, this is not something we'd like to recommend, this is something we could recommend. We sort of picked. And at the same time, we're trying to take in the information that we hear from all of you upon the council, and all of the information and feedback that we've gotten from the community meetings that we've gone out to and spoken with, uh, folks. And we've been very clear that we have a structural deficit, but what I've messaged to the community at the very beginning of the meeting is that it's just as important for us to hear their priorities when we have money to spend, as it is to hear their priorities when we have to make reductions. And, uh, they've been very receptive, and they've shared, you know, their priorities.
Yeah.
A lot of common threads, and, and that was reported here.
Right. And I appreciate that being included as well. The rest, I have a few other, I'm just going to make some comments, just so it can be, rather than asking some questions, so that my other colleagues, I don't want to dominate the time. But to the point exactly is there were some comments with regard to priorities around youth programming. I noticed that there was a, a few comments related to that. Yet, when it comes to cuts, that's where we're seeing some of the, some of the impacts, uh, as well. So, so it's, staff, I mean, council has, has referenced some of the areas of priorities and, and, uh, so I, I would, uh, just hope that we would factor that, that in. You know, that Catalina Trip is one example, uh, some of the other, uh, the, the five K, a couple of other areas where it's direct benefit and service to the community, where we'd potentially be seeing some hits. So I would just recommend that we would factor that in. Uh, general plan, uh, also, there's a, there's a percentage, or there's an amount here. We've been talking about general plan, general plan update for, for quite a few years. The general plan update could directly, uh, be linked to, uh, if, if one done, once done and completed, ideally, we'd be able to have economic development as a result of having more clear, uh, land use guidelines. So, uh, you know, I'm not sure if, within that, what's being presented, if that represents an actual completion of the general plan or not. I would, I would hope so. Uh, but something for us to think about, general plan, the strategic plan, uh, I see a reduction. However, I believe we're in the, going into the fifth year. So, uh, we actually, based on ordinance, we're required to update the general, the, the strategic plan. So I'm, I'm not sure that there is, that, there, that that has been factored in, uh, funds to both complete the, the update, the strategic plan, as well as implement. Uh, and one of the other, speaking of the strategic plan, we're in the process of, uh, finalizing the, the, our branding, uh, uh, study and strategy. And I, I don't know if there's, uh, funds that have been allocated to be able to actually implement what the, what will be, what will come of that. Uh, those are some of the comments there. And last two on, on CIP, neighborhood streets, you know, there's more, uh, we're seeing more of that deterioration of the streets that we invested quite a bit to complete a few years ago. And then the, the, we had started working towards a SAMSA, uh, initiative, and I'm curious where, if that's still, uh, in, in conversation. So more, anything, wanted to provide one-way communication around that. My colleagues might have similar questions, and, and I'd like to, I don't know if anybody from staff was recording some of those comments, but I'd like to be able to, uh, either as a follow-up today or offline, be able to follow up on some of those points.
Uh, Councilor Vince Armiento, I believe you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, I don't know if somebody could, uh, put slide number thirty-five back up for So in addition to that, I also wanted to ask if, um, anybody has the, the amount that's in our reserve, our, uh, operating reserve at this point? It could be ballpark, it doesn't need to be-
Sure. So operating reserves is forty-two point four million.
Okay. So what I recall from that reserve policy, when we adopted that, um, the only triggers or the only protections to access those monies were a two-thirds majority, not a declaration of a fiscal crisis, correct?
I, I believe so, yes. Two-thirds majority.
So it would take a five-person vote to go ahead and access any monies from that one-time basis or, or at all?
Correct.
I, I'm just doing some math here, assuming that we can get to what's, uh, a bridge-year deficit amount, um, structural deficit amount of seventeen point one million. Assuming that gets resolved and we, uh, address the two point oh five million and the remaining budget gap, if you add the transitional year, uh, revised deficit amount with the balanced, uh, deficit in twenty twenty-one, that's pretty close to exhausting all of our, uh, reserve fund balance. I mean, I think we'd exhaust some and maybe need two million more to, to cover that, that balance there, that deficit. So, um, you know, what's really troubling is I remember the years that we were going through our recessionary period. I think we, I think our, our, our fund balance, our general fund balance, uh, got as low as three million.
That's correct.
And so I think we would probably be in a worse place in a couple of years than we were during that global recession that, um, almost forced us into a chapter-nine bankruptcy. So that's a little unsettling to see these numbers, and we can see why a lot of the impacts brought us here. But, um, you know, um, I guess my real sort of broad, high-level question is, is that as we go from eighteen, nineteen to nineteen twenty, um, we're looking at, um, you know, the, the ongoing, uh, ways we operate and provide core services. It's a huge, huge gap between those two amounts. And sort of reinvent, um, our city is probably not redefining, but contracting and becoming much smaller with respect to service delivery. And I'm not sure if that's what we're talking about.
It, it could be a combination of, you know, uh, service reductions. It could be a look at what is considered core service, you know? So right now, what's, what's happening with many of the departments is, you've cut so much of the, cut, what could have been perceived as fat, I guess, in an organization now with a lot of the reductions that we're having, you're actually cutting into the flesh. So some of the departments and some of these programs and services that we operate and we, and that we have running are operating with minimal staffing. So they're no longer effective or, or efficient. So it's, one of the things that we would like to do is start looking at redefining what a core service is. And if an item or a program or a service is not defined as a core service, maybe that requires us to take a second look and see, do we continue to deliver that service? Or is there another way to provide that same, that same service?
Right. And I do recall that there was a case, I think, Madam City Attorney, before the California Supreme Court regarding the whole PERS, um, issue, and I think it's called a California case or something. I know that we had been getting updates on that, and that may change the way PERS structures its, um, you know, its criteria. And, uh, any updates on that? Because that would impact quite a bit, because it seems like that's the pressure that we're receiving on this budget as well.
Yeah, I believe the case that you're referring to is a case that's examining whether the state of California and the local agencies can make changes to vested PERS rights and can make adjustments. And I don't know the status, I could find out the status of that, but I think it was still pending review, and we're waiting for a final decision. Um, many cities are anxiously awaiting that- cities are anxiously awaiting that news because it would be the difference between whether they can actually bargain with their unions over reductions in, in pension payments.
So we know that's tenuous at best, right? We can't rely on that. We don't know which way the court will go. But, you know, as we look at some of these reductions, I know that there was a reference to closing libraries on Sundays. And that's something that really makes you realize, look, a $50,000 haircut on that is not going to make much of a difference on a 40, you know, $6 million deficit over the, the next few years. So, you know, there are ways that I think we can try to maintain those, those really quality of life and, and necessary services that we need to provide for our families. And, you know, one of the things I know that we had spoken about was, you know, going out and bonding. I know we had spoken, and I think the city manager had spoken with the firm that had come before us who did bonding for us when we went out to do street repairs. And we did, I think, a $100 million bond with them.
Correct.
And so they were, I think it was a De La Rosa firm, who now some of the principals went over to the Ramirez firm. And I know they brought us a proposal. Look, things like that we need to start looking at really quickly. And, you know, other things that we talked about, digital reader boards that other cities have that can go out and put digital reader boards on some of their freeways that carve up their cities, right? I mean, so what could be a bad thing, and we used to say, you know, look, we have the 5 and the 55, and maybe the 22 in some places, you know, dissect our city, those could be opportunities, you know. And those are things that at this point, yeah, nobody loves, you know, blight, but some of these are done well. And maybe what you do, you put up a reader board that reduces the number of, you know, cardboard billboards that we have interest in. But it generates some revenue. It's not going to solve this problem. But again, if we're going to be redefining and reinventing ourselves, we should be looking at things like that. Finally, naming rights. You know, look, we have a stadium. I don't even, you know, I don't even know if anybody knows that it's called Eddie West. Why can't it be called AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or whatever the case is? Name that out. The zoo could be named out. We have other assets that we could, you know, possibly consider. But, look, these are things that I think we have to, if we're, if we're in this dire of a condition, we should be thinking very creatively and doing things that we normally wouldn't do. But again, these aren't irresponsible things. I think these are things that we have to be thoughtful and, and realize that other cities have done. So, look, just something for us to, to consider. But, you know, I think this is an ongoing discussion, and I think this is alarming. It should alarm anybody that looks at these projections.
So Councilor Villia is next, and then Councilor Solario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question for you, Robert, Mr. Cortez. On this one right here, the 131 million, is that for the PD, is that with the funded positions or the unfunded?
This includes vacancies that are funded and also unfunded.
So it's a totality?
Total, correct.
I see. So this number's not correct, then, for people that, for the actual members, the employees that are, that are there now. This is everyone, 55 vacancies, correct? According to your paper, it's 55 vacancies.
The, yes. So one thing to mention, and if, I'm going to turn to this, to one of our slides. In terms of the police department expenditures, so if you notice here, if we can get it on the screen, so PD currently, if you notice on here, by third quarter, they've spent 73.4% of their total budget. Okay, the current 1718 budget included 55 vacant unfunded police officers and about 40 positions that were non-funded, correct?
Right.
Correct. So if you notice here, even with those vacancies that were funded, the department is going to hit its budget. It is going to be expanding those, those vacancies. So maybe the question is, where are those vacancy monies being spent? So when we take a look at the analysis of PD, a lot of it is going into overtime. A lot of it is going into additional services that we're providing, so homelessness. So we're having to deploy staff to provide resources to address homelessness, overtime costs. And there's, there's an array of other different expenses that are included within the PD.
So there's OT that you're talking about is because we don't have personnel. We should have 1.8, but we have 0.9.
Currently, I believe the standard-
And that's why it takes forever to get an officer to come to a non-emergency call.
I believe, yes. The standard is 1.8 per capita, I believe, chief. And I think currently we're sitting at 0.9.
Half.
Correct.
Right. So this number is not fully funded. This is with the 55 vacancies?
This value here, that I have on slide 15 for the current fiscal year, includes all those vacancies. Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify that, because every time I look at these numbers, I have to guess, is this with, with the vacancies, vacant positions or without the vacant positions?
And I know that in the past, it's been a little difficult to follow in terms of the number of positions that a department has, and which of those are vacant and funded. So under our city manager's direction, we're going to be changing how we present that budget going forward. So we will be illustrating not just the number of vacant positions, but also those vacant positions that are, that are deemed as unfunded in the budget document.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Solario?
Yes, I have some comments and questions. First, just overall, I think every year, this city, like others, projects deficits. And then we've got to go through workshops like this, and a lot of internal and external work to close the projected deficit. But by law, we have to pass a balanced budget. So I have every faith in this council. We're going to pass a balanced budget this year. Also, I know that this presentation, as Council Member Sarmiento said, begins to talk about some revenue opportunities, but I know there's been other discussions about other things to, for example, place on the November ballot. Whether it be, you know, the hotel visitors occupancy tax, there's been discussions of sales tax, et cetera. And that's not in any of these items, and that would also offset projections. On the cannabis item that Council Member Benavides brought up towards the, and it's a very significant one. At the last council meeting, I raised it as well. When we passed the items related to adult-use cannabis, it was with the condition and written approval that the revenues would go towards enforcement and youth programs in particular, and some for administration. I think I heard our city manager say, well, we're not really sure we want to use it that way. I want to be really careful that we really stick to what the council-approved direction on that was. Really, for us to deviate from that, you know, gets us really into dangerous territory in terms of council approving one thing and staff wanting to spend money the other ways. I would, in fact, you know, argue that, you know, we approved those, I guess it was last fall, those policies, and the retail adult-use stores began to generate revenue starting January 1st. So really, revenue from January 1st to, through the end of this fiscal year, we ought to bring that back and get clarity on how that money is being spent for enforcement and youth services, really in a way that's additive, rather than supplanting other items. So I think that's, that's very, very important to, to mention.
And I respect that, I respect that, Councilmember. But I think the other thing that we must understand is, when the council came up with this policy, I don't know that I was here or not, but I don't think that the fiscal situation that we have before us was very clear. So we're happy to, to follow the lead.
Right. I think you probably were here. But whether you were here or not, I think just the important thing is if the council adopted a policy including very specific financial instructions on how to spend that money, it's staff's role to implement that policy. If there is a recommended change of direction on that, that needs to come back to the council to reallocate those monies, rather than it being a staff-driven internal decision. Correct?
Sure, we can do that.
Yes. I have a question regarding slide 16, which shows for the end-of-the-year projection, a projected deficit of 6.1 million. Is that including or on top of the 9.3 in one-time dollars that was approved last year?
Sure. So looking here at the projected values for revenues and expenditures, this difference value of 8.1 is what we anticipate being the deficit. So the council, when they adopted the 1718 budget, we anticipated having the gap of 9.3. What this illustrates is, what's being materialized as part of the revenues and expenditures, we will only be using 8.1, not 9.3.
Okay. So then, really, then compared to our approved budget that we did last year, we're not using-
Correct.
-the full 9.3 in revenue that we projected.
Correct.
So really, we're in the positive, you know, a million and change based off that.
I wouldn't necessarily view it as a positive. I'm just, I would view it as you're using less of your unassigned fund balances to bridge a gap.
Right. But we had budgeted spending that 9.3.
9.3, correct. That's absolutely right.
And we now are only projecting spending, you know, 8 million and change. And I think that's, that's very positive. And the way this is written kind of makes it seem like this is a, another big deficit on top of fully spending the 9.3 that was in the budget. Another just observation that I want to point out on, on page 20. On page 20, this, this here says increases to base budget, right? So comparing the next year to the, to the current year, and it has the MOU increases at a net of 3.1. I know when the council approved the MOUs, the direction was that those increases would be absorbed internally. So I just want to make it clear that that was-
Correct.
-the case. And I think now you're just making the case it would be nice to still have that. But I don't know that I agree that this should be viewed as an increase to the base budget, because staff was supposed to absorb those cuts internally.
So if I can explain a little bit of, as to what happened here, and I'll focus on fiscal year 1718, when those MOUs were, were approved, the assumption was that departments had vacancies, and that we were going to be able to use some of the vacancy savings in order to pay for some of these costs, so that we would not increase the base budget. And that's exactly what happened. The other thing to mention, as part of the POA agreement or the MOU, we had identified about $1.6 million tied to jail reduction strategies. When the city council took the decision back in August to reintroduce the jail back into the budget, those potential savings were no longer going to be realized, because you're now reintroducing the, the jail back into the base budget. Other measures that we had identified that have been implemented is, there's been some efficiencies in parking citation and the collection of revenues. So that was applied to it, as well as looking for additional revenue sources to pay for overtime. So those have been implemented as well.
Very good. On page 33, which is the general fund over-under, I know for fiscal year 1617, I've seen other reports that show that we actually ended that year in the black.
Correct.
This here says we ended it 400,000 in the negative.
Correct. So the explanation behind this is, when you take a look at the comprehensive annual financial report, which is also known as the CAFR, general fund is a combination of not just Fund 11, which is illustrated here. It's also a combination of other special revenues that are tied into Fund 11, such as the strategic plan funding. There's monies that come from General Fund 11, they get placed in the strategic plan funding. If there's capital improvements, they get taken from Fund 11, they get placed into this other pot that is also combined as part of the general fund. So when we look at the CAFR and we see the, the name general fund, the one thing that we need to understand, it's comprised of not just Fund 11, which is illustrated here, but there's other items that make up that difference. So it's one of the things, I think, from a staffing perspective, that we need to find a way to clearly depict-
Okay. So there's just that distinction between this presentation-
Correct.
-and how we-
Yes.
...know general fund and the CAFR. Also, on the same page, and it relates a little bit to the prior question about the 9.3, it says fiscal year 1718, projected 6.1 million deficit. Is that still going to be the case or not?
This 6.1, if I turn back to slide, let's see here, slide here, slide 16, the assumption was that the, the adult-use retail revenue that we're generating between January of 2018 all the way through June was going to be utilized during the current year to offset that deficit. Now, if there's a policy decision from this body and direction on, on the city manager to not take this approach, then that deficit will go back to being either 9.3 or the 8.1 that we have referenced here.
Right. You know, and just as a general point, I would say that because we had assumed we were going to use 9.3 in one-time dollars for the budget as an approved revenue, that we can't still say that that's a deficit. So here, I mean, you know, we could follow it separately-
Sure.
-but if we're only going to use 6.1 instead of 9.3, and we had the 9.3 as real money in the budget, I don't know that I would view then us finishing the year as, in, in the negative. Just, just some, couple of closing comments. I agree with Councilmember Sarmiento on, if, if we do need to make any changes to the library, I would not start by closing hours on Sundays. Maybe there are other days, days of the week. In terms of capital infrastructure, I'm very happy that we are recommending doing the work on Rate Street between McFadden to Civic Center, because that has been in, in need of some work. Also, as Councilmember Sarmiento mentioned, there's a need for creativity on, on revenues. And I have a list of suggestions and items that, for the sake of it being late, I know we have other items I won't bring up today, but I'll work with staff on them as well. Thank you.
Councilman DiNello?
Thank you very much. So first and foremost, thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
I know you took a lot of work to put this together. So this is some, you know, comments that I, I want us all to understand, both staff and as council as well, is that being an individual who's also a bureaucrat, you know, I worked for the San Antonio Unified School District. And one of the things that is constant is, when you are responsible for a department or a responsibility for a program, you start the day with a list of 10 things that you want to get done. You have your to-do list. And you get busy at your to-do list, you're excited in the morning, you have your nice little Java, and you're good to go. All of a sudden, you get a call, and it's a council member. And a council member says, hey, just wanted to, I, I have a question. I need to know the answer to X. Okay? Immediately, what do you all do as staff members? You put on the brakes, and you're running around trying to find X. Okay? Sometimes X is complicated. Sometimes that little heathen is hiding behind a door, and you got to go look for it. What I'm saying is, is that sometimes I think we, as a council, have to be very careful too, because we want our staff to do things, yet we sometimes become the obstacle to staff getting the job done. I know you don't want to nod your head because your job is on the line. I understand that. That's okay. I still love you. But I know inside you're going, thank you, Sal. Okay? But someone said it. So that being said, I think as a council, we need to be very strategic on how we deliver information and, and really make a decision on what truly is important and what can wait. Because if everything is important, then nothing's important. It doesn't change. So I think culturally, that's something that we, as a body, have to come up with. Now that I've said that, and I'm, and I'm showing you that I empathize with you, because we're two of the same kind, I also need to tell you something else. I'm a little bit frustrated tonight, and you know I don't like to bash on staff. Mr. Cortez, you can, you can take a deep breath, because I'm not upset with you. I'm very happy with your work right now. So don't get red, you'll be all right. But here's, here's the issue, Mr. City Manager, is that I don't understand how many green lights we have to give staff to go get the job done. We have brought up, the, Councilman Solario and I sat with the, sat with the mobile truck vendors. You know what they said? Give us the green stripe, Sal. We'll pay the money. Give it to us. So I said, what's going on? They go, these guys are starting to park right behind us. They sell the same product, because there is, there is no structure. That structure, how difficult is it for us to go out and start with a segment of our, of our city and green stripe it, and collect the business license, the significant increase that they are willing to pay? In fact, they even said, this is what we'll pay. It's in the thousands. Have I heard a report? Has anybody looked into it? Have you piloted anything? Have you taken a gosh darn risk? The house is burning, and we're not doing a gosh darn thing to, it cuts is one thing, but it's also, you're collecting a paycheck here not to keep a seat warm. You're collecting- but it's also, you're collecting a paycheck here not to keep a seat warm, you're collecting a paycheck to be innovative. You've heard that throughout this discussion. So that's just one. Haven't heard anything about a sales tax increase, or a sales tax to bring to the voters where we can solve for this. You know that Westminster did this, and their residents supported it? Fountain Valley did this, and their residents supported it? And now they're not having the type of discussions that we're having tonight. The reality is, is that services have to be paid for. Our community right now, there was an individual who's been, who, it was a couple, the woman was being mistreated, verbally mistreated, a call goes in to PD. They've, they're going to send someone out. Then it becomes physical. Now she's being beat up. We're going to send someone out. They're doing the best they can, but there weren't enough officers on the street to make it happen. So residents had to get involved. Fortunately, there were several residents that did get involved, and they held that individual until the police officers came in. It was 45 minutes later. The reality is, is that here in Santa Ana, we've made great strides, and, but we can do better. We can find ways to generate more revenue. Isn't it interesting that with the cannabis, we were able to move quickly? That was something that we said, hey, let's get on it. All it took was a will. A will. We have low-hanging fruit right now in our city. Let's go get it. Let's go get it. Because this conversation tonight should not just be about the cuts that we're going to make, this conversation tonight should also be about the new revenue that we're going to create. So I just want to encourage staff, don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. Be bold, be innovative, and go get me some money. And tell us where you're getting it from, so then I can thank you and recognize you. But this standing back and, you know, we're going to just see how this goes, no, no, no. There's a small fire in the house, and we have the capability of turning it off if we as a council understand your time, and that's why I'm speaking about it today, is because we as a council have to also understand that your time, you're trying to get things done, so we have to be strategic. Don't be afraid to say, council member, is this something that you need me to do like right now? Don't be afraid to tell them, council member, this is going to take me more than 24 hours. This is probably going to take me 48. And it's not that you're not important, it's not that what you're asking is not important, but can I wait that long because I have X, Y, and Z that I have to accomplish that's going to bring us revenue? That's going to get, you know, solve another issue that's important to your heart as well. That's okay. It's called communication. But in the meantime, if we're going to chill out and step back and go, oh, shoot, our staff needs some time, then you have to deliver. Okay? And so that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for innovative thinking. There's so many things, Councilmember Sarmiento talked about the stadium, other folks are talking about other areas. We need to go and get it. I don't care if it's $100,000. Get the $100,000. That prevents us from cutting an after-school program for the time being. So that's, those are my comments. I believe, I believe the numbers. I think there was a great question by Councilmember Vegas. So those unfunded, what happens with those unfunded costs? I've been wanting to know too what happens with that. I had an idea, but I wanted to hear it from finance. None of us up here have a finance degree, okay? But we are doing the best we can to understand it, we rely on you, and at the same time, we're the ones that are getting the phone calls from the community. So this is a team effort, but Mr. City Manager, I just really need that our staff members to really start thinking outside the box and bringing us these items that we've said that can bring revenue to our city immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now I'm going to call on Mayor Protem Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, just want to thank our staff and our city manager for putting this budget presentation together. I want to start off, and I'm going to read something, because I think it's important for me to put this in context and do it in a way where hopefully it makes sense. So the service a city provides most time, and I'm talking about, you know, the city of Santa Ana is a full-service city. So when we look at that, sometimes it fully does not explain its proportion of the 1% tax. So Santa Ana receives approximately 19% of property collected within its boundaries. For example, there's a difference between the city of Long Beach and the city of Santa Ana. Santa Ana, as I mentioned, receives 19% of the 1% proportional tax. Long Beach, on the other hand, receives 26%. So the example is that 7% less, Santa Ana receives 7% less than Long Beach despite both cities are a full-service city. So the difference is that the city's proportion result from the property tax all starts from the starting point prior to Proposition 13, 1978. City property tax revenue is primarily based on what each city is received in compared to other governments in the area, and in particular, in regards to the mid-1970s. And I say this because we can't make decisions in a vacuum. So revenue and taxation matters. Land use and zoning matters. How the city grows and sustains itself financially matters, and you have to connect the dots. And it starts from the basic formula of our property tax and sales tax. If you look at page 14, you will see that the two major sources of revenue for the city of Santa Ana are sales tax and property tax. Sales tax is very volatile, and it will be changing in the next three to five years because of online sales. The city receives more sales tax than property tax. And so when we look at the property tax in lieu of the VLF, that was changed in 2004, which essentially, we are now receiving some of those monies, and there been, there has been an increase, but essentially those monies in the past would go to the school district. And I want to add where the other 1% of our property tax goes to. Approximately 63% of our property tax goes to the schools, goes to community college, goes to the E-Rath. 19%, as I mentioned, goes to the city of Santa Ana. 18% or so goes to the county and special districts. So when we look at this share pool, Santa Ana is only receiving 19%. To run a full-service city, and when I say full-service city, I mean police, I mean fire, I mean parks and recreation, I mean public works, on and so forth. The amount of revenue that the city is generating is not enough to sustain a full-service city. And when you look at the percent in our budget of who receives what, when you look, the lion's share is going to public safety, because this community has always valued public safety as number one. But our police department takes 51%, our fire department takes 21%, for a total of $185.3 million. And the remaining 28% share receives $71.6 million. Code enforcement, parks, finance, you name it. We're $71 million. We are cutting, there are bare bones, the rest of our department, our planning department, every single department. And so as I look at all of this, and I see how we generate our revenue, we have to connect the dots. And those dots need to be connected with our general plan and our zoning. The only reason we have increased some of our revenue through property tax, and in particular, in regards to the property in lieu because of the assessed value, has been simply because in the past, 2017, 2018, when you look at our permits, we have had an increase in residential of new additions and alterations, what increased our evaluation, and as well as our non-residential, which is our commercial and industrial use. There's been an increase in valuation, which means we receive more property tax. And so that means that a lot of the changes that have happened, and one of the main reasons in regards to residential, is that if we all remember, in 2008, and to where we're at in 2014, there was a loss of foreclosures of over 5,896 homes. A lot of those now are back on the market. They've exchanged hands, you have new ownership, so they made alterations and changes, assessed values went up, more property tax came into the city of Santa Ana. That is great progress. But the city cannot move forward if this council in this community does not update its general plan and its zoning code. The only reason why we are afloat today is because we were smart enough, and our staff was smart enough, to do the harbor-specific plan, which by right, they don't have to go and get all these permits that are, they're having to take a year and a half because we have an outdated zoning code and an outdated general plan. That harbor-specific plan is almost in its completion, people are buying properties, and then we have another specific plan, which is on the other part of our city, but the rest of this city is constrained due to the fact that we have an outdated general plan and a zoning code. We must, if we're going to want to generate the amount of revenue that is needed to sustain this city moving forward, we need not just to go out there and look at vending trucks or the comments that my colleague Councilwoman Sarmiento said, and I agree with him, figuring out how do we use, you know, marketing, digital billboards, certainly that is it, but realize that our best bang for our buck is property tax. And focusing and making sure that we create a balance. And so I would just implore my colleagues and implore our community, that as we move forward, that, you know, and my colleague Councilwoman Benavides made the point earlier, that we have to update this plan. I have been asking for this update of this plan since I've been on the city council, along with my colleague Councilwoman Benavides. We are now on our 12th year, and we probably will not see the update of this general plan before we leave. I am very disappointed, because four years ago, we allocated $2.5 million to update the entire comprehensive plan, and I'm not sure what happened to the money, where that policy decision was made, those allocations of those funds. And if we were going to want to move this city forward, we would do everything in our power to help provide the funding necessary to update this plan, so that we can have a strategy in making sure that we're able to zone appropriately these land uses, so that we can have a true economic development strategy. Because land use and economic development go hand in hand. And so those are my comments. I look forward to working with the staff in regards, and I've shared with them, in regards to the vacant properties that we have, which is 699. The current revenue we are receiving is only $259,000. That is shameful. The exempt properties that we have in this community is 1,875. We generate zero, that's an exemption, and that is all government and nonprofits and our schools, I could go on and on, and the faith-based community. And so we need to figure out a way, because again, when we look at how we generate most of our revenue, it's between sales tax and property tax, and we need to figure out a strategy if we're going to want to sustain this city for the, in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's my turn at this point in time. Some years back, I know all the folks that are here right now may not remember, but we asked Hassan, when he was Director of Building and Planning, you know, how can we get more capacity in the department? Because there are certain positions that generate more money. If you get, if you've got a developer coming in, and they need their drawings reviewed, and they need a quick turnaround, we, you know, didn't have enough folks in public works to do the inspections, and also within the building and planning department. Aren't there's anybody that could speak to this at this time? If not, that's okay, I would, you know, prefer the city manager may do some homework and come back and say, I found the request, I see what you guys were doing in the budget. I'm going back a couple cycles, but the reason I'm making this point is, I believe we're still low there. And even if we're, you know, squeezing and reducing, I think we must find a way where we can become more efficient, and in particular, find money for jobs that produce more money. Because those jobs and a quicker turnaround at the building and planning counter, inspections from the public works department, means that the projects that we've approved, that people want to build, are going to, you know, you know, hit the market that much sooner. I know right now we're having some issues, I think, at 88 North Main Street with some of the adaptive reuse projects that are going on. There's also a potential and a possibility that something happens possibly over at the register site, the old register site, that something, you know, could be, you know, could, as Mayor Protem said, right now, you know, density could increase more, more money, especially when you're talking about real estate and property taxes. Also, you know, maybe something happens with One Broadway Plaza, and we've got all of a sudden an Oracle moving into town, or a company of that nature, along with a high-rise office building, you know, things that bring revenue. I mean, you know, the folks down at the auto mall, they're doing a great job. You know, we're very fortunate that Roger Penske is here in town, and that, you know, Crevié and all those other dealerships down there are doing as well as they're doing, because they are a generator, and they pay sales tax and property tax, and they create, you know, jobs, many of which are here in the city. So, Ms. City Manager, aren't you making notes, but if you could find out where we are, especially in those inspectors within public works that help facilitate projects, and also we're going to get an extra few positions in the building and planning department to be able to expedite, I just fear that that hasn't happened, and that as we try to become more efficient, produce more money, process, you know, things in a more, in a quicker manner, that that becomes important. And the other thing is, I know it's not directly in the budget, but we're being impacted a lot by the homeless right now. You know, we're trying to get more police officers and better service, and if you look at the hours and the time and the effort that's dedicated to chasing our own tail, which is what we're doing, and the faster we go, we, you know, it's just a revolving door, we can't catch up well. If we're able to solve that, and I think we have an opportunity right now, and I think this council, because I know we unanimously moved forward to, you know, try to bring cities and the county under the jurisdiction of Judge Carter, and we're all hopeful that that, you know, results in something positive. If it does, that's going to have a big, big impact in the budget, because we're able to take resources that right now are being devoted to babysitting the homeless, and, you know, stopping crime, and all the things that are occurring in our city, and we'll be able to rededicate those resources. So I'm, you know, hopeful that we can continue to stay focused on that, hopefully to have some victories here in the near future. And that's going to have a big impact, because we can have a new general plan, we can have a new building, but if you've got homeless out in front of that building, impacting the operation, impacting, you know, whether or not people want to come to your town and do business, you know, that, you don't see it directly in the budget, but it's there, and the impact is tremendous. So I think we need to continue to try to figure out how to work with other cities, so that they all carry their fair share. We can't be the scapegoat for the whole county, but on the other hand, things that we can do by working with the county to solve our immediate midterm and long-term homeless problems, you know, has to be somehow part of the focus of what we're doing here as it relates to the budget. doing here as it relates to the budget. Uh, Mayor Protem has a question, yes?
Yeah, for our Planning Director or either candida, in regards to the homeless situation, as we move forward in trying to provide permanent supportive housing or do conversions, currently we have the current sites, um, that are in the pipeline, whether it's Jammerie Housing for the Veterans Housing or Aqua, um, those already gone through the pipeline, currently allowed because we have our outdated general plan and zoning. Any new, um, permanent supportive housing without doing anything, how long would the process take?
This is a good time to introduce our new Planning and Building Agency Director.
So this is his first answer, it's a first answer that he's gonna give us right now.
This is his first day.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the council. Um, you know, I, I think every city has a different process, but we do have, you know, in, in the field of planning and building, there is some established thresholds of timeline that we have in terms of processing entitlement, CEQA. So at the minimum, uh, on a project that involves conversion or, um, creating a conversion of housing into formal housing, probably it's gonna take at least somewhere between eight to 10 months, um, or more, depending on the, the, um...
Based on our prior experience, I've been told it's a year and a half because we have an outdated zoning code, um, and general plan, and so, um, I don't know how we're gonna get to eight to 10 months on anything else, but because these other projects, that's what they took, a year and a half to go through these changes, and then to build, it took another 18 months.
Right, and, you know, like I said, my, my answer is based on what my experience in the past, but, you know, there have been a lot of state, uh, regulations that could help us if we take advantage of the exemption to help reduce that.
Correct, and one of the reasons I'm bringing this up, because I think as we continue to be leaders and following the footsteps of Los Angeles and moving forward with two emergency ordinances in regards to motel conversion and permanent supportive housing will position us for state funding, um, and actually will help those developers that want to build a permanent supportive housing or do the motel conversions, they'll be ready to go and not have to go through the red tape of possibly a year and a half, and will be able to build within, um, 15 to 18 months so that we can get those homeless folks off the street and into permanent supportive housing.
I think you hit the nail on the head.
Thank you.
And, and look, the fact that you're new, welcome, it's a good time for you to be here. If you can bring new energy and figure out how to do things faster, know at the city council, the rest of staff, and everybody will be behind you. So good luck to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's what he was suggesting, he, in his first day, he's gonna reduce by...
He did, he just did. And then Michelle told him he couldn't, but I'm telling him, maybe you can. Be optimistic, thank you.
Thank you, and I did pre-qualify that statement, so, thank you.
Uh, uh, yes, Ms. City Manager.
Since we're introducing one director, let me introduce you to the other director that, uh, it's his first day as well, Mr. Steven Mendoza, he come up here, uh, he's...
Can we ask him a question and ask him how he's gonna improve things?
Well, you know, all these ideas in terms of economic development and thinking outside the box, I'm glad that today is his first day, so he, he's here and able to take that input directly from all of you. So without further ado, Mr. Steven Mendoza.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor, um, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Um, I look forward to working with all of you on property tax, sales tax, and other creative things to make sure our city's sustainable in the future.
Give us your name and title just for the record.
Steven Mendoza, Executive Director of the Community Development Agency.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions of him?
Y'all be nice to Steven.
Great.
Why, why are you making an exception?
And I'm a Santa Ana resident.
Don't encourage him to go in.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, well, thank you for that. So with that, what do we need on this item, Adam?
On that item, it was just a little study session.
All right, got it. Go ahead. I'm now gonna turn things over to Mayor Protem, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we're moving, we have public comment 75B.
Actually, we have a, a presentation.
Presentation, okay.
Um, if I can take a moment of your time, uh, Mayor, members of the council, I would like to point, point your attention to the several actions that are on the agenda on this item. The first is the approval of a resolution that declares the city's intention to place a charter amendment on the November 6, 2018 general election ballot to change the method of electing council members from at-large to by ward. The second item is the approval of another resolution that declares the council's intention to modify the ward boundaries. The public hearing before you is to actually review the, excuse me, the ward boundary process and to take testimony from the public. Um, I would like to introduce our consultant, he's in the back, Paul Mitchell. He was here. Um, Paul Mitchell, um, is with Redistricting Partners, he will be leading the effort in the re-boundary effort. Mr. Mitchell has worked on similar projects with many cities, including the cities of Fullerton, Costa Mesa, and Anaheim. In addition to the extensive experience that Mr. Mitchell brings to the process, we also have the expertise of Christina Tally, Special Counsel with BBK, who has also worked with many jurisdictions, including the cities of San Juan Capistrano and Anaheim. For background purposes, I would like to note that the city of Santa Ana, through the vote of the people, became a charter city in 1952. The city charter, in essence, is a city's constitution that contains many elements, including the number of wards and how many council member, and how council members and mayors are elected. The charter may only be approved and amended by the vote of the people. The voters in the city approved ward boundaries in 1954, but over the decades has changed from five wards to seven wards and as many as nine wards. Our current structure of six wards with a directly elected mayor was approved by the voters in 1986. I will now like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Paul Mitchell, who will go over the ward re-boundary process. Um, Christina Tally and I will be available for questions after the presentation, and the Mayor Protem can, um, then open the public hearing.
Thank you, council members, for having me here. My name's Paul Mitchell, I'm with Redistricting Partners. I'm gonna go through a basic overview that is both for your and for the public interest to kind of go through exactly what happens with redistricting, some of the terminology, and some of what we are expecting to see happen in the next coming weeks. So first off, the California Voting Rights Act is a law that has to do with at-large election systems. And under the California Voting Rights Act, you're in an at-large system. You have districts, but the elections are held at-large. Another term that's gonna be used in, in this conversation has to do with racially polarized voting. And one of the conditions, uh, under the California Voting Rights Act is that you can't have an at-large election system if you have racially polarized voting. The California Voting Rights Act takes its ideas and principles from the federal law, but it liberalizes their interpretation. The idea of racially polarized voting is actually a more liberal interpretation than the federal law. Uh, and it, in changing it, it actually applies these rules to a lot more jurisdictions than the federal law would normally apply to. The, um, conversation in, in Santa Ana is, is not just about this CVR implementation like other jurisdictions, it's about taking the, the boundaries that you currently have and adjusting them and changing that election system, and then on top of it, as was discussed, having to take this to a vote of the public to have, under the charter, the actual conversion take place. So there's some traditional redistricting principles that are important to understand as you're engaging in this process. Some of these principles have been used by the council as it's done its adjustment of ward boundaries every 10 years, uh, but they are slightly different and will involve more engagement, I think, on some of these principles as we, uh, go forward and actually go to bi-area elections. The first one is that districts should be relatively equal size. And what that means is that the number of people in each district should be roughly the same. And we're not talking about, um, we're not talking about voters, we're not talking about citizens, we're talking about whole people based on the 2010 census. And that current number is 324,000 people in the city of Santa Ana. The median district size would be roughly around 65,000 people, and the 5% normal deviation from the largest district to the smallest district would put the largest district around 66,500 and the smallest around 63,000. The actual population estimates for the city of Santa Ana are actually a little bit higher, and in fact, the Department of Finance today came out with even newer estimates for the state's population. But the, the current American Community Survey estimate shows 332,000 residents. The adult population in that would be 140,000, and the current voter registration is at The second criteria that I want to make sure people are aware of is that the districts need to be contiguous. This means they can't hop and jump around, that they have to be whole pieces. And there's also an idea within contiguous of things being functionally contiguous. So if you had a district, for an example, that, uh, crossed a freeway in a little sliver where you couldn't get from one side to the other without leaving the district, that would be considered not functionally contiguous. Or if we were up in the foothills, having a district that starts in, in Glendale and then goes over the foothills over to Pondale, that's not functionally contiguous. A third area, and one that I think requires the most public input, is maintaining communities of interest. And communities of interest is a term of art. There is not a handbook that comes down from the federal or state government to say, these are what communities of interest are. There are a number of communities of interest that are covered by the Federal Voting Rights Act. These would be ethnic, national, language, religious, uh, communities of interest. There are other communities of interest, um, actually, I'll go through this real quick, the, these communities of interest. The Latino and Asian communities of interest are two that stand out in analyzing the city of Santa Ana. And for these, we look at the citizen voting age population, which is over 18-year-old citizens as counted by that American Community Survey, which is a more up-to-date estimate. And in the city of San Ana, we have 17% Asian and 60% Latino population. I've done a couple maps that actually show this in order for us to understand how this population lays out, out in the city of Santa Ana. And so first, to look at the Latino population, you can see this rather, the darker blued, more dense population, and when I bring up these numbers, it's hard to see the numbers, but these are areas that have 80 and 90% Latino by population, by citizen voting age population. The Asian population is more to the east side of the city, and when I bring up these populat... I'm sorry, it's west side.
Sorry.
Sorry. Uh, on the west side of the city, and as you can see in this, it's hard to see in the slide, but this is populations that have 50, 60, 70% Asian population. Another idea for communities of interest doesn't have to do with race or nationality, but it has to do with just the communities that are living within the city. It can be as, as something about how people are working, or a downtown versus a, uh, a suburban or even rural area. Uh, senior citizen communities, it could be, um, people who live around a, a campus, or it could be people who are in a senior center, a senior citizen center. So the, the idea around communities of interest is more broad. I've seen people come before redistricting meetings talking about dog parks. I've seen people coming before the city council meetings talking. I actually just left a redistricting meeting, uh, this evening, where somebody brought up Little Leagues. So there are a number of different things that can define a community of interest that are more broad and about how people in the city view themselves. A, a fourth thing to look at is following city and county and local government lines. This is a way to kind of look at the, at how the city's laid out by other governmental jurisdictions, or by how other redistricting commissions or, or like the statewide redistricting commission viewed the city when it did redistricting. And finally, keeping districts compact, looking at the impairments and the function of the districts, and making sure that they are more circles and squares than big, long serpentine things. Uh, there's a number of mathematical formulas that can define compactness, but the, the best one for me is just kind of the eyeball test. When we look at the current districts, we can see these districts, and we can think about, in particular, where the Asian population was and where the Latino population was, and how well these districts serve to either unify or divide those populations. We also have neighborhoods, and this is a, this isn't the neighborhood file we'll be using for the redistricting, we're getting one from the city that has the actual neighborhood organizations. Uh, but neighborhoods are another way to define and essentially piggyback your redistricting on some of the boundaries that exist in those neighborhoods, because neighborhoods in of themselves are a definition of a community of interest, and how people draw those neighborhoods relates to how they see themselves. I mentioned school districts earlier, and the school districts actually, uh, do provide, particularly on the west side, a, a way of understanding, uh, the city's population. I also looked at the statewide redistricting and, uh, the way that the city was divided in state legislative districts, and this is the state senate district, uh, and the way that it divides the city. And the congressional district. These might not be ideal lines, but there might be a reason why the statewide redistricting commission divided a city in a certain place. And then finally, we have a precinct geography that will kind of come in handy as we get through the process, working with the county to convert the, uh, to the new district lines. And even the precincts themselves sometimes can be, uh, ways that the city is delineated among, uh, major roads and where polling places are put, which a lot of thought is put into that at the county level as well. So, some next steps that we have, uh, obviously was just discussed, the, the act of passing a resolution. We're gonna have two hearings that are about listening. Two hearings where I'm not drawing maps, we're not discussing District A, District B, we're actually listening to the community, talk about communities of interest. Then we're gonna have maps drafted, and we're gonna have two more hearings where we're gonna actually be receiving more community input about communities of interest and taking input on draft lines. And that's gonna be input from the council members, from the public, and it's, it's helping essentially get us to a point where by May 19th, we can have, had two hearings about just communities of interest and broad input, two hearings that are more specific about the lines that are being discussed, and then finally, an adoption of final lines, I believe, on June 5th. And we have an email address that you can send in comments to. Um, we are gonna be partnering with ESRI to have a public mapping, a way, a portal for people to use to be able to see maps, and, um, in my experience, another wonderful way to engage with the community is through community organizations that might be doing their own redistricting, might have their own potential plans, and definitely want to be able to receive those, so if, uh, working through the, the city clerk, we can obtain those kind of files from any organizations that are watching the hearing or that are here in the audience, would definitely appreciate that. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Councilman Dinajero.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I just wanted to let everyone know, uh, the mayor had to leave, he's having some stomach problems. Um, going into ward elections, we wanted to put this on the June ballot and restructure lines.
Councilman Dinajero, is it possible that I can open up the public hearing? Because I have not done that, we're waiting for the presentation, thank you. So this is the time for the public hearing to consider approve the FY 2018, 2019 Annual Action Plan. Oh, actually, I'm on the wrong one. Here we are. This is a time for a public hearing to adopt the resolution declaring the intent to change the ward boundaries, hold a public hearing on the same and adopt resolution declaring intent to place a charter amendment for voter consideration regarding by-ward elections. And at this time, uh, Madam Clerk, have we received any written communication?
The communication that was received has already been circulated to the council.
Fantastic, and I know we do have, um, members of the public that wish to speak, but I'm going to go ahead and, um, pass this on to Councilman Dinajero, and then if there's any other, um, comments from the council, uh, to, in regards to Mr. Mitchell, and then after that, we'll move forward with the public comment.
Okay. Um, so because it's now in November, because we're going to have to try to put ward elections on in November, um, I do believe that, uh, we should maintain what we have in place right now. When the new election takes place, at that moment, redraw the lines at that point without removing, obviously, the council members who have been elected in. So if Ward 6, for example, there's a council member that lives in a certain area of Ward 6, they still are a part of Ward 6, but there's ways to draw the line so that there's equity in the, in the... in the population. We did this about 10 years ago. Councilmember Benavides and I, they were all out of whack. Some districts had like 30,000 while others had like 60-some thousand. And so what we tried to do was bring them in within 2,000 to 3,000 individuals, you know, residents. So I am more, I think where we should move towards right now is assuring that we have ward elections on the ballot in November. And that gives us more time to think about redrawing lines, and we can make a better decision after the election. Because if we do, if we redraw lines now, there's people that are running, that it's just, there's potential for it to look extremely political to remove people from running in certain wards. I don't want to get that reputation, because that's not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is basically bring democracy, stronger democracy to our residents so that they have more of a voice through the ward election process. So that's something that I want you all to think about as we move forward as well today.
Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and I want to thank our presenter for doing a good job in describing the issue and the subject matter that we're going to be covering. And I also want to thank my colleagues on the ad hoc committee that helped address some of the questions and give direction to the city clerk to move forward on this. One of the things I was going to mention is that, you know, the five hearings or the five meetings that are scheduled in Recommended Action Number 2, that is legally minimum required. So we can go above and beyond that, and I think that's what the ad hoc committee had discussed, to see about addressing community groups, outreach into neighborhood associations, maybe the Chamber of Commerce, maybe some of the advocacy groups that came before us and requested, you know, more information and have this issue brought before them, and especially outreach into the Vietnamese community. This is obviously, they're the community of interest that we're discussing here. It, you know, there are different ways you can define a community of interest, as you mentioned, but I think here in Santa Ana specifically, we see that this population has had its vote diluted by the at-large system that we have in place. And we have several examples of that from previous races and previous election cycles that they performed. And you see that they're, they vote ethnically as a block, as do Latinos and as do Anglos, and because their vote is part of an at-large system, they obviously get diluted. So I just want to encourage, you know, and I think that the ad hoc members made a commitment to the clerk, to go out and try to advise and inform the community on some, at some of the other meetings, aside from the five meetings that are listed here in the resolution. And to the extent that we're able to exchange information, you can put some dates on our calendars to go out. You know, I want to encourage the public to participate in that, because this is moving very rapidly, because it's a very short window that we have, and to the extent that this issue has been distorted so, you know, I want to say drastically, you know, by some of what I've read in emails that are being exchanged, and this is, you know, sort of a, of an issue that, you know, is being used for another underlying motive. Look, I think that distortion needs to be answered and needs to be cured, because people are acting under an incorrect premise. And so when they go to the polls, they need to know what they're voting on. We need to be very explicit about what's going to be on the ballot, what we mean by going to district elections versus at-large elections, what the problem is that we're trying to resolve. And it's going to take education, and it's going to take discussions, because people are forming their own opinions about this without any information. They're hearing one thing, they're thinking something else, and unfortunately, the way we stumbled out of this was really, really gave us a bad look, when you have, you know, somebody who's supposed to attest what the council majority voted on, and then it doesn't get signed, and we have to go and sue one of our colleagues, and we have to have a judge declare that somebody acted inappropriately and didn't follow through with their ministerial duties. Those things are bad looks, and that discourages a community from participating and having trust and confidence in the body that's going to be putting this forward. So to the extent we can try to clarify that and correct that error, I would encourage us. And the last thing I was going to say is that I know our hope is that we can have something online in our website where folks can go on and draw their own maps as well. And I know ESRI had a presentation to us that seemed very simple to do, and as opposed to having a map and somebody use a colored pencil or a pen, they could actually go online and use that link to be able to draw maps and be able to see the population size and the configurations. And so hopefully, we'll have iterations and versions of maps provided to us that we can look at that are going to be very helpful. So I'd encourage, you know, groups that are interested in this, individuals, folks that are, you know, who truly want to help this process along, to participate in that. So to the extent we can outreach more, I'd encourage everybody to do that. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple of questions. Thank you so much for your presentation, and clerk, for your work on following through on council interest and direction. A question that I have is with regard to the demographics and changes and increases in population from the 2010 census data to what, to today's date. You mentioned the Department of Finance and the projections that are there, ACS, I believe, the...
It's a part of the U.S. Census, it's the American Community Survey.
Okay. So is that the information that we will be using? And my question is, there have been some developments actually in the west end, along Harvard Boulevard, since the numbers of the census, there have been several pockets of other developments as well, housing developments that have brought some new residents. So what is the criteria, how do we capture, or is this, the ACS information and/or Department of Finance information as far as updated population numbers, does that capture that? How is that addressed?
Well, I'll break the, I'll break the kind of data you're going to see into three buckets. The first bucket is the population number. And for that, we use the 2010 census, period. And that's how we define the number of people that are in each district. Now, the 2010 census in of itself was faulty. I think there was a significant undercount in the city of Santa Ana that was well documented in the 2010 census. But we treat those numbers like they're absolutely real and unchanged. And we can't, in that population number, account for growth somewhere or population being reduced somewhere, even if we know it with some other data set. The 2010 census is how we define the population. The second set of numbers, the American Community Survey, is the, in that bucket, you're defining how Latino or Asian or African-American, the ethnic composition of that citizen voting age population is defined by that American Community Survey number. So when somebody says, how Latino is this one district that's been drafted, the number you're going to get back from me is the American Community Survey number of how much adult citizen population of Latinos there are. Then the third bucket would be a bunch of other data that can help inform the process but doesn't have a lot of legal standing, like the number of registered voters, or the number of renters, or the number of churches that are in one part of the district or another, the number of young people, or, you know, these other kind of data sets that you can build within the redistricting process that help to inform the process, but don't have the same legal standing as the raw population being the 2010 census, or the CVAT population being the American Community Survey data on how the percentage of Latinos or Asians or African-Americans in a district. Does that make sense?
I think it does overall, the various buckets that you described. So there isn't, I might clear and understand that there isn't necessarily a projection on the increase in numbers, population. Notice that you did reflect both the census numbers, 2010 census numbers, and then an updated figure.
Yeah. So the American Community Survey numbers continue to grow, they get released every year. And those American Community Survey numbers are going to show population growth, they're going to show growth of Latinos and Asians, and the percentage of Latinos and Asians that are in a district is going to be reflected by that kind of growing number. However, we still look back to that 2010 number for how big a district's going to be. And legally, we can't actually project out. We can't say, this district, we're going to under-populate because we know there's new developments there. And this district, we're going to over-populate because we know people have actually left. And so we have to treat that 2010 census data as if it's a fact. And you could, however, say that the new residents are a community of interest. Or you could say that a part of the city where there has been, you know, a lot of people leaving and moving out, that that is an area that has unique needs and should be treated as a community of interest. So you can draw lines that take into account these different areas and how the city's changing, but still, at the end of the day, that number of the maximum size of district, minimum size of district, that's not going to change until 2022.
Okay. And you mentioned 2022, because the census is in 2020, but the actual numbers and data...
The actual numbers come out in 2021. Most cities will be doing their redistricting in 2021 or early 2022.
So you're still talking six years out from today's, you know, from 2018. So and that's a good point that you present, because some of the question that has been presented, why don't we wait until the 2020 census? It's only two years out, but reality is that...
It ends up being four years, yeah.
Right. So, four years. So, and that brings me back to actually a question for the city attorney. Councilwoman Dina Hedo referenced the idea of potentially waiting. However, I'm not sure if he was in a closed session when you presented some information with regard to the city having been served with legal documents towards a lawsuit. And so if we were to, part of the remedy on the lawsuit with regard to the California Voting Rights Act, part of the remedy is the steps that we're taking, in fact, to look at the ward reboundries, as I understand it, that that's, that this step, in fact, is helping to address, would potentially help to address us kind of fixing this issue. If we were to not move forward with the consideration of ward reboundry, then as I understand it, we, it would somewhat strengthen the argument, if you will, of the, of the party that is, that has brought the lawsuit before the city. Is that correct? Can you help address that?
Yes, just in summary, the lawsuit has been filed, your CVRA, a lawsuit was filed, served on the city, and it seeks three things. It seeks immediate addressing of the ward reboundries to make them more equal, and it also requires you to reconsider your current election system to go to the, by ward or by district. And it says in the meantime, it's seeking to enjoin you from electing any new city council members. So I think by taking these actions, you at least be addressing some of those demands as we answer that complaint, and then, you know, demonstrate to a court that we are moving forward.
Thank you. And so my last, this is more of a comment that was mentioned by Mr. Mitchell, that the 2010 numbers were very likely undercounted for the city of Santa Ana. Unfortunately, there's a very, we can anticipate, and there's a significant concern, I think, a valid concern, that 2020 will even be more so skewed, given some of the climate around the census and some of the potential questions that are being presented by the current administration. So those numbers are probably going to be even less numbers that are going to, less accurate potentially, and so it almost seems like that using these numbers of 2020 or 2010, probably even be a better situation, so, for the community itself. Last comment for me.
Great, thank you. Let me get to a public comment, because I know these folks have been waiting here. Teresa Lee, followed by David Home, Miguel Hernandez. And I think Teresa Lee asked for translation as well.
We have a translator, a Vietnamese translator.
Okay, great. Welcome, Ms. Lee.
Good evening.
Ms. Lee, can you put the microphone close to you?
Thank you. Xin kín chào quý vị. Cảm ơn quý vị đã cho tôi cơ hội lên tiếng nói. Tôi tên là Teresa Lee, và tôi sẽ là nguyên đơn trong vụ kiện thành phố Santa Ana. I'm so sorry. Đã từ lâu, tôi rất thất vọng vì cộng đồng người Việt không có đại diện trong thành phố của mình. Ban đầu, tôi mong ước tình trạng thay đổi từ nọ được xảy ra, nhưng sau đó tôi quyết định tự mình sẽ cố làm thành. Tôi và nhiều người khác đã từng nói trong những buổi họp của hội đồng thành phố, yêu cầu thành phố Santa Ana chấp nhận hệ thống bầu cử quần. Là nguyện vọng của người dân. Sự cố gắng của chúng tôi đã thành công. Tuy nhiên, lại bị quan tâm theo chiều hướng xấu và bị câu giờ làm cho trễ. Tôi đã đến tuổi không thể chịu đựng và chấp nhận những điều vô lý như trên. Chúng ta đã quá chú tâm về chính trị mà quên mất những điều quan trọng nhất. Đó là không phải là những hành vi, hành động của thị trường. Polido cũng không phải là vì những phiêu bầu của thành phố đúng hay sai. Thành thật mà nói, chúng tôi không phải vì hệ thống bầu cử của thành phố Santa Ana là đúng luật sự thật. Đây chính là vì dân chúng cảm nhận không được đại diện của mình. Nếu hệ thống bầu cử mà không có đại diện được cho đa số người dân, chúng tôi... Dầu cho đó là hệ thống bầu, hệ thống đúng luật thì đó có phải là một hệ thống. Luật cần phải có không, hai cần phải được thay đổi không? Tôi có nghe những người phản đối hệ thống bầu cử mới, nhưng chưa bao giờ nghe họ nói hệ thống bầu cử cũ là công bằng, vì họ không thể xác nhận điều này. Vì do tôi kiền thành phố, là vì tôi muốn nhắc nhở mọi người rằng... Luật của luật bầu cử công bình, luật là luật bầu cử công bình, không phải luật chỉ theo luật lệ. Dầu tôi không thắng vụ kiện này, tôi xin hội đồng thành phố vẫn cứ giữ tiếp tục hệ thống bầu cử quần, vì đây là một hệ thống công bằng. Tiền xa hơn, hệ thống cũ là hệ thống...
Ms. Lee, if you can please wrap up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity for my voice. My name is Teresa Lee, and I will be serving as the plaintiff in a lawsuit against the city of Santa Ana. For a long time, I'm very disappointed that the Vietnamese community goes unrepresented within our city. At first, I wished for the situation to change and to happen on its own. And then, I myself decided to try making the change. I and many others have raised the concern at the city council meetings about the petition of Santa Ana City to adopt an election process that would authentically involve the voice of the people. Our efforts were met with a success. However, our wish was stalled and delayed in process. I am at an age where I simply cannot tolerate tactical storms and unreasonable delays. There was so much attention drawn towards politics that I think we all lost sight of what was important. This was not about Mayor Polido's actions. It was not about whether or not the city council vote was legitimate. It was honestly not even about whether or not Santa Ana election system was lawful. This is about the population feeling unrepresented. If an election system leaves most of the population feel poorly represented, even if it is a lawful system, does that make it right? I have heard several speakers oppose the new election system, but never heard that they oppose it on crowd... they opposed it on crowd of fair representation on the old election system. And that is because they cannot confirm. My reason for taking part in this lawsuit is to remind everybody that the law is appropriately named the Fair Voting Act, not the Legally Adequate Act. Even if I should lose this lawsuit, I asked the city council to move forward in a fair and inclusive process for the new district election system. Does fair system better than old system? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
David Hoan, followed by Manuain Hernandez.
Good evening, council. Dave Hoan here, longtime resident. I think we've run out of excuses. A couple of you used excuses for keeping it off the June primary, and those excuses are no longer valid, and we're out of excuses now. So let's, let's get this done, where we go to a fair representation of all of our residents. And, and otherwise, that cost in June will look like pocket change compared to what we're going to be facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuain Hernandez, followed by Paul Gonzalez, Ken Nguyen, and Miguel Hernandez.
Good evening, council members. My name is Miguel Hernandez. I'd like to first to wish everybody a Happy May Day. Today, we recognize and remember all our workers, so just want to put that on the record. Unfortunately, a lot of our, our, our supporters are my allies, and part of which we are part of the Santa Ana Fair Coalition Elections had to go home early, but I am here to, to represent them and represent their voices. I've mentioned this before, but my name's Miguel Hernandez. I'm the executive director for Oco, the Orange County Congregation Communalization. Also, we're a member of the Santa Ana Fair Election Coalition. I don't want to, I'll keep this really brief. I think Teresa Lee just mentioned the most important reasons why to move forward. I mentioned previously, justice delayed is justice denied. I think we need to move forward in the redrawing of the maps, of putting the election on the November ballot. This is really about democracy and making sure our city is respecting the voices of all our, our residents and all our citizens. I participated in many, in actually two district election processes, both in Anaheim and Fortton, and it is possible to do this in the timeframe given. We got to make sure we do it in, at times and places where the people are, so we'd be glad to work with you to, to make that happen. And so let's make sure our Vietnamese community is well represented and make sure we don't dilute anybody else's vote. We have a Latino community, we have a low-income Latino community that we want to make sure is represented. So let's just move forward with this, and we'd be happy to cooperate and assist any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Paul Gonzalez. I'm exhausted. I'm calling you Miguel Hernandez, Paul. I've been going at it since 4:00 AM every hour, and I have to admit that I'm, I can't even see anymore. Paul Gonzalez.
You're doing great. Good evening, council. I'm here to talk about item 75B, which is broken up into a couple parts. First part, on holding an election in November on the question of district elections. I am wholeheartedly in support of that, and I would encourage you to move in that direction. This really is the direction that we should have gone several weeks ago, when you decided, I felt, in a very rushed and secretive manner, to try to force this issue onto the June ballot. Unfortunately, that just caused a lot of embarrassment for our council, which is, and for the city, which is unfortunate. But here we are. We have the opportunity to put this on the ballot in November, as it should have been all along. With regard to the question of redrawing the maps, however, I feel that we are putting the cart before the horse. As council member Tina Herro mentioned earlier, it, it doesn't make sense for us to proceed with redrawing the map before the question of district elections has even been asked and answered. Once that question has been addressed by the public, it then makes sense to follow the public's wishes and proceed with redrawing the maps. So I would encourage you to act on moving forward with district elections in November, and then, once that question is decided, move on to the question of the maps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Ken Nguyen, followed by Shahiki Sti.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council member. My name's Ken Nguyen. I'm Santa Ana resident for 39 years. I'm here on behalf of Vietnamese-American resident in city of Santa Ana. The, as you may well know, the Santa Ana consists of about 11% population of Vietnamese living in Santa Ana, about 9% white, and 78% Latino. The redraw, the drawing of the ward boundary in our city is very important to Vietnamese-American community in Santa Ana. As you may, some of us point out, most of Vietnamese population concentrate in the west end of Santa Ana, mostly in dividing towards four and towards six. Because the, the, the reason why the redraw, because it will give us the ability to have our own representation in the city council, our vote will be counted and make an impact with the city election, and, and because otherwise we'll be diluted in general vote population when we vote by the, by at-large. But the most important to us is how the, the district line we're going to be to redraw, a good redistricting process should have community of secure, meaningful representation, we ought to be open and transparent and allow community to give input, especially the, the ad hoc committee, whoever involved in the redrawing district, should have a good representation of the community, especially the community of interest, which is, here we're talking about Vietnamese community as well as the non-Latino and Latino community, which are interested of residents of Santa Ana. I also would like to thank Councilman Vincent Sarmanto to point out about the community of interest in Santa Ana. In my belief, the, the individual or consultant who responsible for redrawing the, the line of boundary in our city should be fully aware of our city. Just for example, recently in city of Garden Grove, they just have recently redistrict and re, and vote by district, and very successfully done, and all community of interest have been protected and equally treated. Thank you for much of your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. I don't think Mr. Shahiki Sti is here from a court. I think he probably left, right? So that was our last speaker. And so now, what we have before us is a recommendation action, but before we move forward, is there any other members of the council that wish to speak on this issue? No? If not, we have a recommendation action, one and two, before us.
I'll move the item, both, both matters down the agenda.
We have the first, which is a resolution of the city council to declare intent place charter amendment for voter consideration of November 6, 2018 general municipal election ballot to transition from an at-large to by-ward council member elections to the California Election Code, and a resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Ana declaring its intention to consider changes of boundary lines of wards and fixing the time and place said hearing. Maybe we can break both of those out and start with one, and then move with number two.
It would be your pleasure, Madam Mayor Protem.
But bifurcate them, yes.
That, that would be fine.
So, act number one. 75B. We have a motion by Councilman Benavides and Councilman Solorio. Ready? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, motion passes. Number two is the resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Ana declaring its intention to consider changes to boundary lines of wards and fixing the time and place of said hearings.
Quick question first.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment. I, I really do believe, as I was, I was thinking, I was talking to another council member as well, and I do really think that you made a point. So don't ever say that we don't listen to, to people from the public. I, I think, I thought your point was, well, very well articulated, and that, you're very articulate about it when you said, it doesn't make sense that we would change boundaries before voters have said that this is what they want. So I still, I, that, that kind of, I was, I was on the fence, but I think what I'd like to make, put language in there, Madam City Attorney, that states that. I don't know if I'll win that one, but can we put language in that states that we would, we would change the boundaries after?
I think you simply wouldn't pursue the second resolution, but then it was going to defeat the whole purpose of tonight's discussion.
Got it.
So you might otherwise just vote no.
Okay, so then I'll, I'll vote, I'll make a motion to approve then, item number two as well. Because we could come back to that, right? And make a decision on that.
Right. I mean, the second resolution is simply declaring that you're going to have a series of public hearings. You're not making any, you're not making a decision-
No.
-to do anything at this point, other than to begin the process and to hold-
So I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion, second. Any comment? Yes, it's Solorio.
Just a brief comment, because I know from the dice and from the public, there's a question about what order to do, and I would just comment that we, we don't want to, I think, do district elections, just to do district elections. I think the reason we're here is, we heard some legitimate concerns from the Vietnamese community last summer, we did some demographic research, and we really do find ourselves in a situation where, you know, we're probably out of compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, and so that means that we need to change our wards in a way that are going to be consistent with the California Voting Rights Act. And to first do an election on wards and then ward boundary changes later is kind of like a justice delayed, justice denied kind of issue, so that, at least for now too, just process-wise, it's just to do the series of, of hearing and, and maps. And, you know, when we do approve wards, if we do, we're going to need five votes, so we're going to be having many more conversations on this, but I'm supportive today. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman V.
Thank you, Madam Protem. I'm, I understand that we have to do the wards if we, if it were to pass in November, but still, I'm still hanging my hat on the census, because we're using numbers from eight years ago, so I won't be supporting this item, but we do have to go through the process.
Councilman Sarmanto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and since you're so tired, I'm going to speak extensively, and, just kidding, I'd be very brief. But one question for our city attorney staff was, in the event that we can't agree, because to redraw boundary lines for wards or districts, you need a two-thirds majority to do that, which means five votes from the city council. Let's just presume that we don't achieve that. We're unique, different from Anaheim, different from Garden Grove and other cities that have gone from at-large to by-district elections, because we have lines drawn already. So in the event that we can't reach that two-thirds majority, would we default back to the existing lines? And in the event that the voters approve of moving to district elections from at-large, would we just use the existing lines in the event that those, that, that we can't agree on, on boundary lines upon the council?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to actually ask our special counsel to also assist in that, in answering that question, as to what will happen if we can't meet our charter thresholds and what that results in.
She wants to be our city manager as well, so please sit down.
Yeah, yeah. Just kidding. Thank you. If the voters were to decide to move from at-large to by-ward elections, at that time, the council, that, that would be in effect for your next election, right, for, for your, the next, the next election in 2020. Before then, the council then could change its boundaries before that election, or if it didn't, it would be the existing boundaries. So you have an opportunity after this election to change your boundary lines before the next election, the next by-ward election.
Right, but my question was, in the event that, as we're moving forward here, and we want, and for this selection cycle, if we don't achieve a two-thirds majority to draw new lines, would we default to these existing lines if, in fact, the, the voters approved a change from an at-large system to a by-district system?
Yes, nothing changes. You need an affirmative action to change your boundary lines. So if you don't get the affirmative votes to change your boundary lines, your existing boundaries stay exactly the same.
And again, the benefit is, is that we already have lines, and that's where I think a lot of other cities really had to go through this forced exercise, because they had no lines. It was just one boundary for the entire city.
That's correct, but without disclosing too much information, I would just also like to remind the council that we did get some advice on what that might look like if you change to a by-ward election system. We already have some information on, on whether, given your existing lines, you're really going to be in compliance with CVRA. So it's kind of a, a catch-22 in a way. So my opinion would be that if, at some point in the future, the voters approve, you're going to have to take a serious look at your, at your boundary lines. Yes, it'll default, and yes, that would get you there, but I don't think it will 100% get you out of the situation that you're currently in.
Right, and I think, similar to Councilman Solorio's point, I think, to me, you need both of these elements to be addressed, because addressing a change in boundary lines without moving to a district election system from an at-large really is a hollow change, because it's still going to, it's still going to have the element of diluting votes and not achieving compliance with the CVRA. So that's, you know, to me, again, something that we need to consider, but, but I think we, right. So I don't know who's chairing this, because our Protem just-
Mayor Protem had to head out, so she handed me the gavel here. So we have, we have motion, second. I think one, one quick comment that I wanted to make with regard to when we would consider the ward reboundaries and to the comment that has been made with regard to the 2020 census, based on the comment the special counsel just made, assuming that we do move forward with, things are moving in the direction, whether it's the, the support will be there from the public, or whether the court is going to call on us and, and demand us to go to by-district elections. I think that the, the writing's on the wall, if you will. There is very, very little chance, unless we want to do like other cities, Anaheim and others, to fight, we're going to end up going, and then pay millions of dollars, and at the end of, then, at the end of the day, have the court decide for us anyway. So assuming we're going to go to by-ward elections, the 2020 census, those numbers won't be available until, basically, post the next election. So we have a 2018 election, then we have the 2020 election. So regardless, we're going to have to redraw using the numbers that, of the 2010 census. So it, it, just, this idea of using the 2020 numbers, it's not going to, we're not going to have them basically before either the, the 2018 election or the 2020 election. So just a comment of, of information there. So we do have, I'll, I'll call the question now, we do have a motion, and a second, you have the maker and the, and second of the motion, and clerk? You do have that?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make, okay. So then, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We've got one, no, no abstentions, motion carries. Then we'll move on to, we already addressed item 80, and we have, I think we had another work-study session that I'm assuming at this point we're going to, for going to city manager, what's your intent there with regard to the second work-study?
I think we already did that one. Did we do the second work-study? I'm going to ask, can we, is it, is it- I'm going to ask, can we, is it, is it timely that we have to have that work-study today?
Councilmembers, we don't have to have it, in fact, there was a comment by the Mayor Protem to, to carry this one over.
Let's do it.
Can we do that, Mr. Chair? So, so we'll do that, then I will go back to, I believe we have, we recessed to the Housing Authority, did we, right? So recessed to the Housing Authority, we had, we already addressed one of the items, but we have the consent items one through four, so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Mr. Chair, did we do sixty D?
I apologize, sixty D, actually, I, I thought that the former acting director was going to come back, but I was advised by the city manager that, that the item was continued to the next council meeting.
Okay. So was that by staff, or was that by?
Well, what, what happened is, I think, a little bit misinformation, we got the impression that that item was being continued by council, so we communicated with Mr. Zerchmied, who is actually, was chairing the meeting in the, in the mayor's absence in his city, so it, so it actually worked out better for him, but he was prepared to come, but we thought that the item got continued, but if you'd like to have us present it, we do have other staff that can.
No, 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 that's fine, I mean, and, and so, I guess, that's the problem with having elected officials as staff as well, so, but no, I'm completely good with continuing it, because I know that there were some issues with that, so.
So why don't we go ahead and take?
I just, I just wasn't sure if it was the council continuing, or if it was staff continuing.
It, so at this point, is staff recommending, or would council like to make a motion, and to what date?
I think we should just put it on the record that we continue the matter, because the director isn't here, so I'll move that we continue the matter.
Well, second.
Have motion second, to which?
Should we do thirty days? Let's do thirty days, if that's okay with my colleagues.
Okay. Thirty-day continuance on Madam Six, on item sixty D, we have motion second, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. So, I will be, I guess we technically adjourned the Housing Authority meeting a bit ago, and we came back to a council meeting. We are continuing the work-study session, one as well, so we'll come back then now to, we don't have any, we've already addressed our public comments, correct, Madam Clerk? So we'll go then to city manager, any comments?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to have one announcement. The Police Department Open House will take place on May twelfth, Saturday, May twelfth, from ten a.m. to one p.m. This will be the third annual open house. The community is invited to attend this fun-filled day and meet with officers, and get to know the specialized units such as SWAT, mounted police, motors, and K-9. Staff will also provide tours of the Police Department and give interactive demonstrations, free hot dogs, chips, juice, and other refreshments will be provided to their attendees.
Thank you, your city manager. Thank you for that update to the community, all are welcome, May twelfth, at Santa Police Station. We'll go to city council comments, Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to begin by, I'm not sure if we're going to be back here before Mother's Day, or is that?
Actually, this meeting will be adjourned to Thursday, May third, to hold the second public hearing on the ward reboundary process.
I'm going to wish everybody a happy Mother's Day anyways, because I don't know if we're going to have time for that when we're at that, we're at a study session, so happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, a special shout-out to mine, I love her dearly, and I'm blessed to have her in my life still, but to all the mothers out there that do an incredible job raising their families, and, and being great role models in our city, I certainly do want to give them praise. One last thing I wanted to mention, and I think I mentioned it to a couple of my colleagues tonight, I, I think it's incredibly disrespectful for the council to not respect the public's time and come out here, an open session after a closed session that goes beyond six p.m. We schedule our, our meetings at that time, we publicly notice them at that time, and we often come out here twenty minutes, thirty minutes, an hour, an hour and a half after, you know, our scheduled time is, and we have to do business, council business, there are folks that, whose time is very precious in speaking about mothers, we have a lot of mothers, parents, children in the audience, that, you know, have much better things to do than wait on us. My, my recommendation is that we either stick to a strict schedule and come out here at six p.m., we can schedule our closed session for an hour earlier if we have a dense amount of items that we need to cover, or we could simply adjourn the closed session item at six p.m. and continue after we're done with public, with our open session. I just think it's, you know, it's happened too often, we get neglectful, and I just think it's, you know, we're inviting people here to recognize them, giving, giving them certificates and proclamations, and we have them waiting out here for an hour, and that is, that's just not a good look for us, I think it's, there's a simple cure to that, you know, we're, I could be here all night, you know, it's ten-thirty, but I also want to be respectful of staff's time, I think there are ways that we could reduce the time that we spend here. Also, doing presentations, I think, is a great thing, there's so many things that we need to celebrate and recognize and applaud people and the public for the great work that they do, but maybe what we could do is we could condense our presentations that we all provide, and we like to recognize folks with, to maybe one per meeting, because if we all did two, we could have fourteen presentations a night. So there has to be something to govern our conduct, and to make sure that we're, again, respectful with the public's time, staff's time, and everybody's time that's involved. The final thing that I would say as a suggestion is that, as we limit the discussion and the comments by the public to three minutes, we should do the, we should do our own limitations on our time, because we could get very verbose, and maybe there's a way that the council can kind of self-govern itself and try to keep to three minutes. If we need to go beyond it, we can ask for one of our colleagues to give their time and, and use theirs, but I just think it's about time that we start being a little bit more rigid, nobody's saying, "Let's be completely strict," but let's do a little bit more to tighten up this, this program, because I think we've gotten way, way out of hand, so just some food for thought for my colleagues to consider, I think it'll be helpful, we'll run, run a much leaner meeting, and as we're talking about reinventing how we govern, maybe this is one way to start. Good night.
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento, Councilman Tinejero.
He took everything I was going to say.
All right.
So happy Mother's Day, thank you, Vince, for taking my thunder. But the other thing is, thanks again for taking the second part of, I was, I'm basically going to support Councilmember Sarmiento here. Madam Clerk, what I would like in our next meeting is for you to have a stopwatch, and for you to time every council member and how long they speak, because there are some people, it's kind of like an alcoholic that doesn't admit they're an alcoholic, you have to show them proof, you know, I don't want to, you know, yeah, I'm just using it as an example, but there are some members who think they speak like two minutes in a meeting, and I'm like, "No, that two minutes is really four hours," and so we, we need to be mindful of that. So, right now, council members can give how many, how many presentations per month? Is it two?
Two.
Two, per meeting?
It's supposed to be one.
It's supposed to be one. Okay, so.
Yeah, you have adopted a resolution which governs your presentations, it also governs your speaking time, so perhaps what we could do is get you all a copy of your resolution, just to remind you of what you've imposed upon yourself, as a good starting point.
Well, that's, that's, that's great, but I also think that staff, I'm basically asking staff to keep us in line, because they're the ones that are doing this, they're the ones that can, you know, time while we're up here, and not be afraid of basically telling us to adhere to our own policies, okay? So what I would like is for us to make sure that we limit one presentation per council member per month, and let's take out that, let's strike out that, that little loophole that says if you give a joint, if you, if you give a joint presentation, then that doesn't count against you. So it's just one, if you're up on that microphone, I think that's one. Number two is, we should be adhering to the three-minute rule as well up here when it comes to items, and like Councilmember Sarmiento stated, if we need to go over, we ask permission, and it could be that the lively discussion, it's a lively discussion, and we do give ourselves that, that professional courtesy, but let's give it a shot.
Tinejero, your light has gone red.
I'm sorry? That's right, let's do it now. So anyways, and with that, good night.
I think it would have gone red twice, and that, let's go to Councilman Solorio, any comments?
Yes, because in case I take four hours instead of two minutes, I'll just speak to one item. I had the pleasure today to, on behalf of the mayor and the council, go to the ribbon-cutting for the new children's playground at Chepas Park. Turned out beautiful, you know, small, little, compact playground, but there's a lot of density there, and so they'll get a lot of good use and a lot of very happy children. We also did receive certificates of recognition from Huy Nguyen, County Clerk Recorder, who has a lot of roots in Santa Ana, so he was really pleased to be there, and then we also received, and, and the clerk recorder was there himself, and Supervisor Andrew Doe had a staff person also provide a certificate of recognition, so thank you to all the staff, particularly the park staff, for putting that event on, it was well-deserved and well-done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Viegas.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides, I'm just going to report out of the Youth Education and Community Services Council Committee, which met on April twenty-third, in attendance was Councilmember Benavides and myself. In the committee, we discussed the installation, we got an update on the security lights and security cameras in all the parks, we also received an update on the police services at the park, that's something I asked for, I want to know how, how often our, our officers are being called to the park, because we don't have any park rangers, or we have one and a half. Also, we received the update on the park bond, Proposition sixty-eight, which is on the June five primary election, and we also received an introduction, and we met with the, our new youth services supervisor, who's the, taking on that role here, and she briefed us on what her job entitled and what her goals were within the city, and we also received an update on the partnership for the Santa Ana Unified School District in preparation for the May twenty-first Joint Policy Committee meeting. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilman Viegas. Couple closing comments that I have, first of all, want to, once again, officially welcome Mr. Mintai, our new planning and building director, thank you for also quickly running to the mic and addressing questions on your first night, and also want to welcome Mr. Steven Mendoza, our community development agency director, I know you were walking, earlier walking toward the mic as well, and we're trying to get some, some questions addressed there, welcome to you both, glad that you're here with us, we're a dynamic city, and today was with the budget presentation, maybe, maybe we should have had him come next, next meeting, we would have had maybe more exciting and upbeat things to be addressed, but overall, you'll, confident you'll find that City of Santa Ana is a great place to, to work, and a great community to serve, and look forward to working with you both, and supporting your, you and your, your efforts here, directing both of your departments. Want to thank also just the, the overall staff, again, budget was, was maybe not the smoothest or easiest meeting, there was a lot of thoughts here from, from council, but I know that, that it's been a lot of hard work by the city manager and deputy city manager, finance, the rest of the team, we addressed some, some questions, some ideas, also want to encourage us to, to think through just the economic development opportunities, what we might be able to do on new and creative revenue-producing measures. One thing that I would request from city manager, if you can provide to the council, I know we've, I mentioned earlier, the branding strategy plan, just a memo update perhaps to council, from what I understand, North Star, the, the firm that we have retained to work on the branding plan, is, is coming close to conclusion, and, and almost at a point of being able to present to the community, but if you can provide the rest of the council, my colleagues, and myself, I'm interested in getting some information on that, that I think is also, will speak into our efforts around economic development. And speaking of economic development, just want to encourage members of our community of residents to, to shop local, shops Santa Ana, support local jobs, and as a last comment, we will have the, we will adjourn to this meeting to Thursday, May third, at five p.m. here at council chambers, for the second public hearing on the ward reboundary process. Want to encourage those who are not able to attend to please participate in the process and send their, their comment to ecomment@santa-anna.org, you can also inquire from our clerk of the council to be able to provide you with further information. With that, meeting adjourned, have a good night all.